All right, good evening. I'll call a meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to discuss strategy with respect to preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, department heads, and to conduct collective bargaining with the clerical union pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, subsection 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to opioid litigation that if discussing the matters in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town and to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. We are in executive session. All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call a meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 9, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. Their openings are on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the press.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic who we serve. Our allegiance under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carter, if you could lead us in the prayer.
Just give me a minute. Okay, sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunities to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for the citizens of the community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, the first item on our agenda, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Mr. Belvin?
Good evening. Hello, everyone. Robert Belvin, 26 Gate Street, Carver. All right, first thing, I want to give you guys a little update on the North Carver Water District quickly, is that we have a distribution operator. He's been doing some work down there, getting our paperwork in order. We just signed a contract with TATA and Howard to be engineering, to work toward the DEP issues. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have the DEP off our backs.
Mr. Belvin, can you just... TATA?
TA-TA.
Okay, thank you.
And Howard. All right, and then, sorry. The next process will be to go to our lawyer, to have a meeting with DEP, to get rid of that order that they gave us, and hopefully revert back to the old order they gave us that didn't have any fines. That's my goal for that. The next one is, you guys need to get rid of small water systems, all right? The water people, for the schools and here. They're not worth it. You need to find someone else. Next one is the police chief and deputy chief process, getting people up to date on what's going on. If you guys can give updates of that, because we're going to need a new police chief and a new deputy chief, and the people really want to know what's going on and where the process is with that. So that would be great for you guys. Oh, the other thing is with the Water District is changing out the water meters. We'll have to start pretty soon, as soon as we get them in, because without getting the proper readings, we're not going to get the right money coming into us. And then, we're going to have to do a water rate increase. So that's guaranteed, and who knows what's going to happen with that? People will not be happy. And then, the last thing I have is, and I've been dealing with our accessory apartment by law for years, and this new ADU by law that came in, all right? The ZBA has an issue going up, and I think you guys really need to watch how this is playing out. There's someone that wants to put, that put an AD, an accessory apartment in, all right, years ago, and it kind of goes back to what my system, what I went through for it, is that the building inspector says one thing, the zoning board says something, okay? And both of them were wrong, all right? So it puts us in a situation where this guy complied with the ZBA and the building inspector at that time. Then, he turns around and, come to find out, the building inspector now says, "Well, you're not up to code in your accessory apartment that you put up with," all right? And it wasn't his fault, it was the fault of, in my opinion, is the ZBA, because their thought process was an accessory apartment for your family. It's for your family, so you don't have to comply with the building codes about being a separate two-family, because they never considered it as a two-family. And in all actuality, ADU is a two-family structure, okay? So it has to comply with the building codes. So now, all the ADUs or accessory apartments in our town that have been built up till now probably don't meet the codes of being a separate apartment. So now, the ZBA, I have a letter I'm going to give them at their meeting, hopefully, but you guys should really be aware of who you appoint to the ZBA, all right? And how they do their job, because they're not doing their job right. They've been there for years and years and years, they didn't do it right, because they're not looking at three things. You look at the town bylaws, you have to look at the building code, and you have to look at the health and safety code when you start dealing with housing, of anything, anywhere there's someone's going to build for housing. Those are the three things you have to look at at all times. So you guys have to be aware. Please, watch the meetings about 15 Pleasant Street and the ZBA meeting that'll be tomorrow, all right? Because this is really important, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellvin. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we will move along to our next agenda item, which is a discussion and possible vote on the creation of a committee, I'm sorry, on the creation, committee makeup in charge of an economic development plan committee. Mr. Cannon, I think is something you brought to me, so would you like to discuss this a little bit?
Just to give you kind of a 30,000-foot level, so, you know, Massachusetts municipalities develop economic development plans to promote local economic growth, attract and retain businesses, improve the overall quality of life for residents. These plans are strategic tools to help towns and cities make informative decisions about land use, infrastructure, zoning, and investment priorities. So for the town of Carver, we worked out, again, if you will, a charge for the committee and then a makeup of the committee. I'm a big believer that these plans shouldn't be done in a vacuum, that we really should be having public meetings, posted agendas, minutes, invite people in to speak, hear from residents. So if you will, Mr. Chairman, you want me to read the charge, and then I'll give you the breakdown of the committee?
Yes.
If you want to.
Please do.
The Economic Development Committee will work with Serphead. Serphead will be our consultant on this, give us a good regional impact of that, too, I believe that's a good thing for us. To develop town-wide economic development plan to achieve the town's greater economic development goals. Given the recent growth, the work will include a reassessment of economic development priorities, identification of key sites, and challenges associated with their development will assist in the further managed build-out of the town. Economic development in Carver should also modernize the agricultural industry. Through cranberry farming and other activities have diminished over the past decade, it remains a defining character of the community. As such, the economic development plan will consider ways in which the town's policies can support agriculture tourism, sorry, agrotourism, and the diversification of agricultural activities as it becomes part of an entertainment and lifestyle choice. A little bit of a different focus, but I'm sure. The committee will consider the development of key sites in town, consider high-end, low-end scenario developments upon the town's greatest opportunity sites, and develop recommendations and strategies to implement the plan. So I do want the board to know, coming out of this plan would be recommendations, there would be no town policies coming out of here, but there'd be recommendations to, you know, give to many different boards. Like you just heard about the zoning board of appeals, it could be a recommendation for them. If you will, Mr. Chairman, you want me to read off the makeup?
Yes.
So it would be a select board appointee, a planning board appointee, redevelopment authority appointee, cranberry grower's appointee, commercial property owner, business community representative, and then a citizen at large. So I'd give a seven. Myself and the town planner would sit in the meetings, non-voting, but we would sit in the meetings.
And who would appoint these folks?
I am appointing these folks. It would be my committee.
I would like to be on it.
And we are looking for, tonight, we're looking for a recommendation from the select board for representatives to be on the committee.
Well, okay, I have a couple of questions. So the first thing is, this board would not make any policy itself, all these policies whether they be brought to or to town board and voted on?
Correct.
Correct. And this is economic development, so you're talking about commercial economic development, correct?
Correct. Primarily commercial economic, you know, generally you look at housing, the overall build-out of the town.
So I think, I think when you, in the charge, when you talk about the development, I think on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line down, challenges associated with their development, we'll insist in further managed build-out. I would prefer it's a commercial build-out of the town, so we can be clear that this is not residential, but it's commercial. And personally, no offense, Mr. Cannon, but I think these people should be appointed by the select board.
I'll take no offense to that, Mr. Chairman.
Obviously, the planning board can appoint, the planning board, RDA can appoint their own folks, but I think...
Many times, boards do recommend to the select board to be appointed, so we could ask them to make a recommendation to the select board. I have no offense for that.
Okay, yeah, my own feeling is this, it's a town board, it should be appointed by the select board. I'll open it up to the rest of the board.
How is this, when I read this, I guess, how is this different than what the redevelopment authority does?
Well, this, you know, it would be town-wide, the redevelopment authority would certainly be helpful, and it's my understanding, I'd say the redevelopment authority is more site-specific, so there may be, let's just say, this, coming out of this, there's a recommendation, there'd be another industrial park, right, in town? Then the redevelopment authority would take that ball and kind of get into the specifics of an industrial park, or, gee, I don't want to pick something else, the other side, you know, more agricultural land, I'm trying to think what the opposite of an industrial park is, John, but something very specific that the redevelopment authority would become very, very detail-oriented in, very much like the Green Technology Park, right? They went on grants for it, they put in the roadway, they put in the light, you know, there was a lot that the redevelopment authority can do, because they have the authority to do it, that this board does not.
This would, if I may, Mr. Chair, so this board would be more of a general picture? So we'd like to see this area developed more, but not this one?
Correct, correct. This is more of a 30,000-foot level.
And how does this, you said in the very beginning, works with Serphead? How does it work with Serphead?
So we would be hiring Serphead as our consultant to come in and help us with this economic plan, so they would be hired on like our consultant.
So that's like with the master plan?
Correct. Very similar to the master plan or the recreation plan, they're helping us with both.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
How will, will you update the master plan with this information? I was going to get in, that was...
Yeah, I didn't spend too much time with it, Mr. Ryan. If I look at the master plan, I think there's only two pages of an economic development summary, if you will. So, yeah, so certainly in the master plan, it might reference this, it may pull out the highlights of it, I don't, you know, we'd have to get into that discussion more, but they could just reference the economic development plan or pull out some of the highlights and then reference the economic development plan, but yes.
Okay, and then the second?
I think you're right, it should.
Yeah, we should.
It definitely should.
We would probably need to get back to that plan, too. And then, is there already an economic development plan in place, and how old is that, and do you have a status on it?
Can I try to soak to Miss Hewn? She helped me with this.
So, and I hate to tell you this, I don't remember the name of the company that did it.
Tom Bott.
What?
Tom Bott knew the name of the company.
Okay, so Tom Bott knows the name, but there was one that was done.
Okay.
And it was done, I want to say, when I got on the planning board, which would have been 1998, sometime in the late 90s, early 2000s. And their goal, I guess their mission that they had been assigned was to tell us where we, where having town water would be best. So this is really a long time ago. And they picked North Carver, because that's where the commercial mainly, mainly was. But obviously, it did more than that, but that's my memory. And I'm so glad to know that it actually exists. It's a real thing, but it's quite out of date, you know, so.
And not very well-developed, I would say.
It was more of a tight focus, not a big-picture thing.
Mr. Hoffman, do you have anything on this?
No questions, but I also would be interested in joining us.
Okay, and I have, just on the makeup, a couple of questions, only because this has come up during the appointment of other committees. I think we need a little more specific, for instance, the commercial property owner, I assume that's a Carver commercial property owner?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I think we should specify that that person will, commercial property in Carver, and the business community representative, that's someone who has a business in Carver?
Yes.
So are you looking for the owner of the business, or just someone who works for the business, or?
Ultimately, I'd say we were looking for an owner.
Okay.
That'd be my...
So I think we should specify, should specify business, business owner, Carver business owner, community, so we're, so we're clear. Anyone have any issues with that?
I agree, yeah.
So I think, is there a motion to amend? Yep, sorry, go ahead, Mr..
Do they have to be copresidents?
Well, that's, that's true, too, they should be a business owner and a resident, or?
I wasn't thinking they'd be residents, but if that's what the board wants, we'll look for residents.
Do we think it should be a resident or open it to a business owner that doesn't live in town? Would that be a good to have an outside town you are...
Yeah, there might be a different perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the business owner, as long as they own a business in Carver, but what's the thought of the board?
Well, a business owner that knows the area, you know, the agricultural base, that knows what's going on, versus someone coming in from, say, outside North Boston would be beneficial, but then again, having someone come up with new ideas, making a stick out of the box, I like that as well, so I don't think I would...
And again, we would be appointing this person.
Exactly.
As long as we go along with the amended charge, we would be appointing this person, so we would be able to have the ability to make that.
Correct.
Okay, so are you okay with that, Jim?
Yes.
That work for you?
I was just asking a question, I wasn't sure.
Oh, okay.
I know in the past, we specified Carver citizens, but good to keep going.
So I think first, we should probably take a vote to amend the charge, to add the word, when we find the spot again, when we, the fifth sentence toward the end, where it says "further managed build-out," it's a further managed commercial build-out.
Right.
Yes.
Any issues with that? Could someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the plan, add commercial.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dan Ryan says aye.
John Carter says aye. I forgot a roll call vote.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. And then, I don't know if we need a motion, I guess if you're okay with it, Mr. Cannon, that the select board make the appointments?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I don't think we need a motion on that. So we just need to select a select board appoint, well, I do have one, one further question. What role is Serphead going to play on this?
So they are our consultant, they will actually be the ones writing the plan, they'll be attending the meeting, taking the notes, you know, really leading it with Tom Bott, I would say, but...
But they'll be writing the plan based on what the members of the board suggest the plan should be?
Yes, yes, that's the main thing. Just like a consultant, you would direct them of how you want the plan to look, but they'll bring, you know, they'll bring structure to us, they'll be able to show us what other towns have done, you know? I think it's one of the benefits, you know, it's like bringing in a consultant, right? They can tell you what other outside communities have done and how they've structured their plans.
How often do you anticipate that this board would meet?
I want to anticipate, you know, probably once a month, if you will? Because, you know, one thing about, again, you give direction to the consultants, go back and do work, usually takes a couple of weeks to get some work done, and then you come back to the board.
All right, well, I think we have two members of the board that have indicated interest in joining the board, is there...
Do you want a motion first to create?
I think it's a creative...
Yes, I guess we do.
Is this an ad hoc committee? I know there's type, different types of committees, is that what you're, I mean, how do you establish a formal committee, or is this just an ad hoc committee reporting back to the select board?
Well, you know, truth, I don't believe there is a difference any, any longer. There can only be, there can only be staff, if you will, staff, and then there's public boards. And this would be, to me, in my mind, be a public board, it would have agendas, it would have minutes, you know? And again, they're going to report back to the select board, but it would be an official board.
How long do you anticipate this board, do you think, anticipate this being a permanent board?
No, I do not. Once the plan is completed, it would be dissolved. That'd be my recommendation.
I recall ad hoc committees are still, have to post and have meetings and all that stuff, but they're just like a form by the select board for a purpose, and then they, when they're done, they go away.
Yes.
Because committees have to report at town meeting, and that's why I'm getting into, is this a, some kind of a formal committee, or is it an ad hoc committee?
I'd call it, I'd call it an ad hoc by that definition.
Perhaps the motion could include some reference that when the plan is completed, that the committee dissolve.
Okay.
And that way, we don't have to go to act at town meeting and dissolve it.
Right, so I'll make a motion that the select board create an ad hoc economic development committee to work with Serphead to develop a town-wide economic development plan, said committee to dissolve after the plan is complete?
I'll second that, adding economic development plan committee.
Yeah, economic development plan committee.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, one last on Serphead. Do we have a representative on Serphead right now?
It's Mr. Bott.
Mr. Bott's our representative.
On the Serphead Commission? Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, is there a motion to appoint a select board representative?
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion about that?
Yeah.
Since you're going to interview the other appointees, besides the planning board appointee and the RDA appointee, you're going to interview the grower, the commercial, the business, and the citizen at large, why don't you interview the select board appointees, too?
Be a little bit unusual, we haven't done that in the past. I can't recall a time we've ever interviewed select board appointees. If the board would like to do that, I'll put it on a future agenda. I don't think we have time for that tonight, we have a very busy agenda.
It's just a suggestion, I thought it would be a good idea.
Well, what's the, what's the feeling of the board? Would you like to do interviews?
I don't think that's necessary, because we're working with everyone for quite a while.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It's my thought.
You don't want to know if someone's more qualified?
I think, we've all lived in town for quite some time, and I think we all have qualifications to be on these different boards.
Okay.
All right. I guess, again, no disrespect to anyone, we've got a lot of background, a lot of different skill sets here, but I think Jim was on the planning board, I think I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Hoffman as our representative.
Yeah, so was I, for 10 years.
Okay, so are you seconding that motion?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? I guess, just for myself, I think, no disrespect, you and I are on an awful lot of boards. I think it would be nice to see, let's spread it out a little bit.
There might be a reason for that, too.
No, no doubt, but a...
You point who you want, Mark. I'm just, I have a lot of experience in this area, and I was on the planning board for 10 years.
No doubt.
But that's okay.
No doubt. And again, Mr. Cannon, this is a public board.
Correct.
So people can attend the meetings?
Yes.
And...
And the other point is they report back to the board, so the board's going to be the one that's going to be...
We get final say anyway.
They report back to this board, correct? Modifications, that's where all of our experience can come in and help.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Hoffman to this, this board. Any further discussions? Hearing, Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says no.
Mr. Hoffman?
I will use my salt for this call.
Okay, so it's 1, 2, 3, 1, with a recusal. Okay, all right, moving on, and just slightly behind schedule here, we will go to our 610 item, which is an Eversource poll hearing for two FO polls and anchors, 439/8 and 439/7, 160 feet apart on Wareham Street, Sessions map 128-7-0-R, and 128-2-0-R, in accordance with Plan Number 5893189 dated June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. We are, the public hearing is open.
Hi.
If you could identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Julie Long from Eversource, and I'm following up regarding the poll installation on Wareham Street.
And just to be clear for everybody, these polls are already installed.
They have.
And we have discussed this multiple times in this room, okay.
So I'm just here to follow up, and any additional questions? I know, like you said, they've met, I personally haven't been here, but there's been several meetings regarding this.
Yes, and you understand the select board's concerns regarding what happened with this poll, and...
I'm behind you 100%.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the board?
I guess, just to get a status, because I know they, you had to go before other boards and complete a bunch of work. Has that all been done to date, or are we...
I believe the conservation board and the planning board have both voted to approve. Am I correct, Mr.?
Yes.
Thank you.
They have signed off on it.
All right, so we need to vote tonight?
We do need to vote. Anything, any questions from the board? Mr. Hoffman, anything?
I do.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah. This, this reads like we're going through the normal process. Doesn't say anything here about, you know, puts in writing exactly what happened with... I don't want to go into it, but it couldn't...
So because, because we are petitioning for the polls, even though they're already in, we need the record to state that you have agreed, even though, you know, like I said, they are already in, as opposed to the board having us remove them and then getting the permission and putting them in, unfortunately.
No, I understand that, but I don't, I don't want future boards not to know that this was obviously a cluster, and nowhere is it documented in the paperwork that we're seeing. You know, I understand you want it to look a certain way, but this did not go that way. You know, I understand you want it to look a certain way, but this did not go that way.
No, not at all. I agree.
So can we get a letter from Eversource explaining exactly what happened, what their mistakes were, what the resolutions were and for our files?
I certainly will speak with my supervisor. She's been involved in this. You know, I know there's been several meetings with the community liaison, so I certainly can request that for you.
And I think also to your point, Mr. Carter, we could have the town administrator write up a synopsis of the timeline here and, and put that, put that on the record so that we would, people would be aware of that. Anything else, Mr. Ryan?
And all remedies have been completed to date that needed to happen at the site?
Yes, we worked with the planning board and the town planner on replanting native species and plants have been, and the planting has been completed. And, you know, we did come in front of the board and state that everything was done and, you know, Eversource did apologize for this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Mr. Hoffman, do you have anything?
No, all set, thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Mr. Belvin?
Do you mind?
No, 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 no.
So you all have kind of skirted around this whole cluster of what happened. How about we just get a synopsis right now for the public to know what happened with this from the board?
We did, we did at previous meetings. I mean, we've had several meetings, so we've covered in great detail at other meetings. I mean, the summary was, yeah, the polls went in and the process wasn't followed and, and we had Eversource before us before. They've made changes at, you know, within the company to, so it didn't happen again. And then they went through the proper process after, so we did at previous meetings go through all of this.
Yeah, Mr. Ryan is correct. And we've had Eversource representatives called in just for the purpose of identifying what the problems were and what the long-term solutions were and multiple times.
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think that's...
But just, sorry.
Go ahead.
But keep in mind, this is like happening over and over again. I mean, this is, they always make a mistake, they always come in and apologize, they always come in and say, well, never do it again until they do it again.
I don't think it's happened since the last time we had all those multiple Eversource representatives in, though. I think we, we made a pretty good, I'm hoping, clear. Mr. Belvin?
Okay, so I think you guys just gave a great synopsis of what happened. I don't think another letter or documentation for anything. It's in the meeting minutes that this has happened, okay? And if it gets put in a file, you're never going to see it again, all right? So I don't think having a letter on saying that they screwed up and they know they screwed up, they already apologized, so thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. I, I think it's, it's a done deal as soon as you guys are done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just confirm, I want a letter.
Okay. That, that, yes.
Yeah, my, my comment to that is I think that it would make sense just to have a formal, I don't know that we've seen a formal letter from Eversource that said, you know, here's what was done for the remedy of the, of the situation, both internally in their process and externally to, to the site. So I don't know that we ever received anything for our records. I mean, you're right, it goes in a file and, but it does become a record. You know, if they produce to us and say that in this particular case, the process wasn't followed, changes were made, and then they subsequently followed the process properly, I don't think, I think it would be fine to, to have a document to that effect.
Yeah, I agree, and I also think that hopefully it won't, but should the same issue occur again, it would be nice to have something to refer back to and whether it's this board or future boards or whoever it is. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Hoffman, I'm sorry. All right.
To kind of carry on what Dana just said, I think this letter should be included with this, with this file, with this full, if you will. So when anybody looks back at this public hearing, they'll see that letter and how it was attached to this hearing in particular, that it was discussed earlier, the issues that, that we, that they had, that we had, and how they remedied, remedied. So it's just like Mr. Belvin said, it's not just a letter sitting out there, it's actually a letter attached to this hearing per se.
I, I, I agree, and I also think that we, in the, in that attachment, we should include, like I said, a some type of synopsis of the whole timeline so that it's all there in an easy to find place. Anything else, Mr. Hoffman?
No, that was it.
Okay.
So I think before we close the hearing, you need a motion from us to approve the polls. I don't think we ever did that.
Nope.
Well, I think we should close the hearing and then...
Oh, do we do that first?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. All right, so I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing, Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. The hearing is closed. Is there a motion on the polls?
I'll make a motion to approve the two FO polls and anchors, 439 slash eight and 439 slash seven, already installed at Wareham Street on the assessors map, 12817, 0R and 12820R in accordance with plan 5893189 dated June 13th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Discussion, hearing, Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda this evening is a discussion and possible vote for an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for 11 Green Street on Mass General Law Chapter 184 restriction for a veteran's preference for 11 Green Street. Ms. Bellmore? Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you for having me. I'm Amy Bellmore, I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth, and I don't know if you would like to begin first with the memo that Tom Bott had prepared or if you would like a recap of where this project has come from?
Could you give us a quick recap?
Sure, sure. So this has been a long time coming. You all have heard us speak about this property for at least three years. Habitat signed a, an initial purchase and sale with the town. This is an abandoned property at 11 Green Street, has been abandoned for, at that point in time was around 12 years, so now add a couple of years on top of it. Prior to our official acquisition of this property, we discovered that there was an open, non, um, open, non-compliance order from DEP due to a site remediation issue that needed to be addressed, and so that work has been done by the town. I do want to give extraordinary thanks to Tom Bott. He's been very diligent in trying to work through the issue. It did take a good amount of time and, and several professionals to get the work done, but that was completed a few months back. And so we are now at the point where the, this property is going to have, at the town's, the town's preference, I guess you'd say, would like to have a veteran preference on this home because it is only one single unit of housing. That means that it doesn't qualify on the subsidized housing inventory through the state's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. You all, the town, decided that the veteran preference was a higher priority than the SHI, and so we went a different path. That path is, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
That path is through Mass General Law Chapter 184, and town council had asked us to get a deed rider that was approved by the state, which is what brought us through that pathway. The council for the state on this program, her name is Caitlin Loftus, she has since provided us with a conditional approval on that affordable housing deed rider, so it will still be deed restricted in perpetuity with a veteran preference. And so the motion in the memo that Tom Bott had prepared for tonight is basically the state needs a record of the select board's approval to accept that deed restriction.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
I want the motion.
Yeah, well, so there's two different motions.
There's two different motions, right.
The first one.
Right.
All right, Ms. Long, I move that the Town of Carver Select Board vote to accept and approve the proposed restriction on the property located on 11 Green Street, Carver, Mass as an affordable housing restriction pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 184 to be held by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth for the purpose of preserving the long-term affordability of the property in accordance with the applicable state affordable housing guidelines and in partnership with the Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth, Inc. Further, that the select board authorize the chair and/or town administrator to execute and deliver the affordable housing restriction and any related documents and to take any actions necessary to ensure its proper recording with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and to take all actions necessary to ensure a request is submitted by, to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for their approval under Mass General Law's Chapter 184.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
So this, this vote is just on the deed restriction?
Correct. Yes.
And what is the process, I guess, going forward from a standpoint? Is this a lottery for a veteran to be, how does a veteran get chosen?
So we will go through, the answer is yes to the lottery. We will go through our typical, we follow fair housing marketing guidelines, again, follow the state's guidelines. We have application process that includes a paper application. These folks would still need to meet income qualifications as well, so this is still a habitat household or a still a habitat home that is serving people who are in the 30 to 60% area median income. So we're looking at what their income is and as well as household size, this will be a three-bedroom household. And from there, all eligible and qualified, eligible meaning with the veteran preference, living in our service area, our six-town service area, and then qualified, financially qualified, not making too little money to afford their affordable mortgage or too much money to be beyond that 60%, 60% threshold. They then would go into a lottery and it's a blind lottery drawing.
Thank you.
Anything else, anyone? All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Thank you. All right. Next.
Then there is a second motion, yeah.
Okay, I move to amend the purchase and sale agreement between the Town of Carver and Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth, originally signed on November 2nd, 2022, to reflect the cleanup of the site, the veterans' preference and amended land development agreement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah. Um, I, I've got questions, I guess, on the overall, I mean, through you, Mr. Chairman, the town administrator, I'd sent a request to find out how much has the town basically given to the whole Green Street project since its inception?
Um, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have that. I know that the town voted $110,000 for the environmental cleanup. In this, polls right now, there is a, a request, there's a water abatement that needs to be taken care of. If the North Carver Water District is not able to fulfill that, I believe that the town would want to step up, that's $4,500, approximately $4,500. And then there was the original asking price of the land. Amy, if you...
It just seems like this has gone to town meeting, Community Preservation Act, it's been, there's a number out there and it's much bigger than I think anybody ever thought it was going to be.
So the Community Preservation Act did vote, again, years back to support the project for the construction materials at $125,000, but none of that money has been spent because we haven't done any of that work.
I'm looking at the purchase and sale and it states that, and also I'm reading this wrong, that we're, that we're receiving $35,000?
That's right. That was the, we submitted to, you know, a response to the RFP and that was our proposed purchase price. And then in addition to that, $17,310 for the water charges up to, I guess, the time of the abandonment to November 2nd of 2022. And so the charges that Mr. Cannon is speaking about is from November 2022 to current day.
I, I'm not saying that this isn't worthy, I'm just trying to get an idea.
Sure.
We've got X amount of money sunk into this and we're getting $35,000 back, so there's a net number sitting out there, but then in addition to that, we're going to go pay for other items on this. I guess, at what point does Carver just say we're done?
Well, we, if I may, Mr. Chair, so in my opinion, I mean, this is a, this property was taken in tax title.
Hmm.
It's been sitting there for I don't know how many years, maybe 15 now?
About.
Something like that. We finally have someone who wants to buy it and make it a home for a veteran. We would have had to pay the money no matter who bought it, and it's not clear we would have gotten much more money from it from any other organization.
I, I don't dispute the cause, I don't dispute giving it to a veteran, I'm just saying, no one can seem to answer the question as well, is, is what is the total cost of the Town of Carver when it's all said and done? Or will, they'll still be contributing? Does this, does this end it from a standpoint of this purchase and sale with the water charges from November 1st, 2022?
Yes.
And then the cubic yards we have to go then take out? If someone finds something else down the road, are we done?
But that's standard, if there's something, we didn't even know this was in there. I mean, obviously, we would have had to clean it, we would have cleaned it up first, if you mind, but all this stuff is standard, yeah, because we're the seller.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I have an all-in value right now of 204,500, and the, the construction debris that was there was taken away, this was some plywood and some gravel on site was taken away by town forces.
So it was nothing hazardous or anything like that?
Nothing hazardous, correct. There was hazardous material before, again, we're back to town meeting, $110,000 to clean it up. That's all been cleaned up. Again, there's this water abatement sitting out there, 4,000, approximately 4,500, I think it's 4,600, I want to say 47, I can't, I don't memorize, but so...
So it's 4,000, do we have any idea what the cubic yard removal is going to cost?
Well, again, it's already been done by town forces.
Oh, town forces.
Town forces did that. I mean, there's a, there's a cost to that, but it's, it's minimal.
If the North Carver Water District does not grant the abatement, does that come back to the board for a future meeting or is that voting on this?
I would, I would approve that invoice.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else from the board?
Those are my questions, no.
Mr. Hoffman, anything?
No, all set, thank you.
All right, is there a motion? There was a motion and a second, sorry. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Bellmore.
Thank you all very much. We're really looking forward to delivering this unit for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next this evening is the appointment of election officers. Jeff Demora, Mary Ross, Linda Billman, Geraldine Gavoni, Mary Long, Amy McCain, Janice Mcardle, Joanne Mayette, Maureen McLaughlin, Anne Marie Olson, George Olson, Dawn Podavani, Patricia Richards, Eileen Russo's, Nancy Ryan, Michael Bouchard, Susan Smith, Donna Ferrand, Deborah Porter, Jonathan Porter, and Deborah Eby. We do have the town clerk here if there's any questions, but this is pretty standard.
I'll make a motion to appoint the members as...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Cahill, do you have anything you want to add? You good?
No, I'm, I'm good if you guys are. I know you're behind, so I keep you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoffman, anything? You good?
No, all set.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. All right, next is a discussion and possible vote on select board and town administrator goals for fiscal 2026 and a discussion and possible vote on ranking of the select board and town administrator goals. Again, we had quite a lengthy discussion at a previous meeting. Mr. Hoffman, you weren't at that meeting. Did you have a chance to see that meeting on, on YouTube?
Yes, I did.
So you're, you're caught up on what the discussions were and things like that? Okay, so we had, I, I think in, in the interim, Ms. Weston has sort of grouped those goals together so they're a little easier to see. I think the first thing we need to do, we had a long discussion at the last meeting on whether or not we should rank these, these goals. And I believe the majority of the board felt that they should be ranked, but I think before we do anything, we should, we should take a vote on that, whether we feel we should, we should rank them or not. And I personally have always felt that they should be ranked, but others may feel differently.
Through, through you, Mr. Chairman, the town administrator, I, I think that giving you some kind of guidance with level of importance is probably better than saying, hey, here's X number of goals, get them all done. So, my feeling is ranking is better. I was curious about your thoughts.
You know, I do appreciate that, it's good to know, there's only a limited amount of time in the day, you know, and if you have to put your focus onto something, you know, it's nice to know what is the highest priority of the board. That's how, that is how I feel. And this board knows it just as well as I do. There are hard decisions to be made, and sometimes you have to make decisions about how you spend your time and which, you know, what effort into, if you will. And again, if it's a higher priority of the board, I'll make that a higher priority for myself.
Thank you. So, I'd lean towards ranking.
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, if there, yeah, make a motion and we can discuss.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we rank the goals and objectives, select board goals and the town administrator goals.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Anyone, Mr. Hoffman, anything?
No.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye. Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, two more seconds. All right, so then we have, let's set the goals. First, let's work on the select board goals.
Okay.
So, we have a lot of goals here. Personally, I think we should, my own thoughts, I think we should pick three or four and prioritize those for the town administrator. I think we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, we have a lot of goals here. I think that's, it's way too many to possibly hand off to the town administrator.
They're in categories for ours, I guess we can just vote on whether the category you're saying, like the North Carver Water District is a top priority? I think that's what you're, you're looking at is, I mean, the goals seem to be like just tasks kind of within the goal itself.
Yeah, we, we could do that. I mean, some of them within the categories are a little bit off. I mean, for instance, in the finance and budget, you know, the first one, finalizing plans for dedicating funds for capital needs is, is quite different than confirming that the town administrator and the finance director are on a budget schedule. So, we could, if the board wants, prioritize those, those categories, but I think within those categories, there's some.
We may need to do a little bit.
Different, different things.
Well, if I may make a suggestion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I think they're all basically the same thing. So, everyone's worried about capital planning and making sure we're all on schedule. So, why don't we just call that a finance and budget item?
I would agree.
I mean, that's the gist of those four things together, right? So.
In order to complete the finance and budget, you kind of have to do the four things.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's, they're kind of redundant after a while. Even the battery storage, that goes with the capital debt stabilization, blah, blah, blah. Your budget, yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, well, I think if we're prioritizing just the.
That could be one sentence.
Yeah, I think if we're prioritizing just the categories, then it's, it's not very difficult at all to prioritize those. If we, everyone could say, if we take three categories and prioritize those, would that work for everybody?
Okay.
So, maybe what we could do, Ms. Weston, if you could track this a little bit, if we just go around and give a three to our top priority, a two to the second one, and a one to the third, then we'll, we'll add them up, and we'll have our prioritized.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So, in my opinion, this is really, what I just said is really true for all of these. So, under North Carver Water District, those three are all this, I mean, they're all the same thing.
Right, that's why we're just going to prioritize the categories and not those individual.
Okay, that's good. And yeah, same for town properties.
Yep.
Same for land, so.
So, I'll be glad to start off, for me, if you're ready, Ms. Weston, my top priority would be the North Carver Water District, number two would be finance and budget, and number three would be the feasibility of current town properties, just, just the way they happen to be on the list here. And Mr. Carter, why don't we go back to you and?
Um, I'm going to somewhat agree, I'm going to go finance and budget, I've been shocked, as one. North Carver Water District is two, and feasibility of current town properties is three.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think, I'll go with North Carver Water District is, because that has to happen, we just absolutely have to have that solution complete, so that's my number one, and I'll still keep finance and budget at the top, so that's my number two. And then I do think we need to deal with the current town properties, so I'll keep that as number three.
All right. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to make another suggestion, that land development, taxes, and feasibility of current town properties, all that has to do with land. So, it's two kind of categories, one is town properties and one is other kinds of land. I think they should be combined into one thing, because, for example, under Land Development Health Act for Protection, that comes under support and endorse all those different plans, open space, master plan. And all of those help guide our management of business development and financial management. They help us determine what we want to do with these town buildings. I mean, it's all kind of land, land use issues, maybe two, two categories under that.
It is, and I think we can certainly talk about those issues, but we're getting into an awful lot of select board goals if we start adding all those onto it.
No, you're actually paring it down, you're saying, let's, let's look at town-owned properties, and then let's look at other issues under land development. Those are two, those are two categories within the whole issue of land. And you really can't address one without the other, it seems to me.
We can, we can try to work those into our discussion. Okay, well, why don't you rank them, and we'll, as we go forward, we'll see what, as the... So, are you ranking that, that number one?
Which is number one, yeah.
Yeah, that would be number one, but I want those two categories pushed together and made into just one sentence. It's, it's kind of part A and part B.
I don't, I don't agree with that, I think that's, I think that's just too many different things there.
Well, it's two, it's two things.
We can certainly try to look at those as the year goes on.
It's two things, it's town-owned property, and it's other land, and how we want to develop that. And those are clearly very separate things, but it's all talking about land use in town. And I think when you, whenever you talk about land use, you should really take all of that into consideration.
I, I don't agree, I think we should keep the feasibility of current town properties to what it, to what it is.
That's right, I've just been doing that for a long time, and that's been my experience, that it works best that way. But that's fine, if you don't want to use my experience.
I just think the board disagrees, that's all.
Does the board disagree?
I'd like to keep them separate also, because I think the, the town properties are really dealing with the old police station and supporting, you know, other, you know, other buildings in town that we just, it feels like it's a different category to me.
Working on development of a council on aging plan and things like that.
And not to throw another curveball at everybody, but I always look at it from the town administrator's standpoint, what can you get done in a year versus what can you get done in multiples of years?
Right, so if you do a master plan.
And I look at these, I look at the second section as not a year, not within a year.
Okay, so, here's my point, kind of summarized. I don't know if any of you have ever been on a master plan committee.
I have.
But when you do a master plan, you take all of those things into account, under land use. It's all one thing, because everything affects everything else, even if it's a town-owned building. You know, I mean, there are town-owned buildings all over the place, and.
I think we can do that still, I mean, I think if we're looking at renovating or whatever we do with the old police fire station, I think we can, the council on aging, we can keep that in mind as part of that. I don't think we need to combine things.
We're not, we're not saying that we'll never look at these things, we're just trying to set priorities within what we can do for the, for the year, or the balance of the year anyway, that's all.
Yeah, so, so what I'm saying is, if you do the master plan first, you've taken care of all these things, under feasibility and under land development, because that's, that's just how it works.
I, I don't.
That's okay, you guys do what you want.
Well, I mean, it's a board, would you like to rank, do you have a ranking? I mean, you could certainly rank land development taxes one, if you want to, but.
No, I think, those are, I don't want to lose a point here, those are my two combined as one.
Okay.
They would be my first.
Don't make them the same.
Then, North Carver Water District is next.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I really only have the two, I think the budget, frankly, I think enough of you are on the budget, that's going to get in there anyway, and that's a, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer, we do that every year, so I don't, I don't really know.
No.
How it's different from any other year.
Well, I think the, the way it's different is keeping to certain guidelines, okay. Mr. Hoffman?
So, I have a question, so these goals, these are to be done by the end of the fiscal year, is that what we're looking for?
I think it's really more the, really more the term of this current board, I think that's really, it's our, as we have, have, we have agendas and we move forward in meetings, these are things we're trying to work on and make happen.
Okay, because the only reason I'm asking is, I agree with Sarah, that those two are very important and they're tied together, so like, picking three, does that mean four, five, and six, if we don't get looked at or even thought of?
Well.
I think these are all important things, but I understand we want to prioritize the top three, but, you know, three and four are, well, I shouldn't say three and four, but the two items that Sarah had are very close.
Yeah?
Yep.
I just, you know, if the top three seem to be the majority, I don't want to see the others get overlooked or not even approached.
No, that doesn't mean we can't work with the town administrator to, to work on those things, but.
Yeah, that, it actually means that.
I think we're looking at priorities.
It probably means they won't get done, that's what it means. And, and I agree with you, Jim, I appreciate that. We've both done that sort of work, and, you know, it's, it's all, it's all part and parcel of the same thing.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman, would you, do you have a ranking here?
Sure, so, North Carver Water, just, just my number one, and then feasibility of current town properties, two, and land development, number three.
Okay, thank you.
So, if you want me to split mine up, my vote up, is that what you're asking, Mr. Chair?
You would like to.
No, is that what you want?
I think that's what the board decided on, yes.
So, I think the, the land development is my number one, the feasibility is two, and the North Carver Water District's three, because, again, North Carver Water District has to get done, it's going to get done.
That's right.
I, I don't even, whatever. I, I'm just concerned, because our master plan is out of date, our open space plan is out of date, our housing plan is out of date, and I don't know how we can do this kind of work without having those things. Plus, we don't, we can't get grant money to do them either, so.
All important goals. Mr. Weston, can you tell us where we're at here?
Sure, so, three of you wanted North Carver Water District to be the top priority, three of you wanted the feasibility study to be number three. For the second priority, two of you wanted the feasibility, two of you wanted finance and budget.
And?
So, if you put all the land things together, then we've got three topics, Mark.
I'm sorry, we.
So, North Carver Water District was the top.
North Carver Water is one.
And town properties was three?
Feasibility was three.
Okay, so where was financial budget?
Number two.
Okay, so that was, so it's.
Two people also wanted feasibility.
No, it's two, she's saying, we didn't really have a clear second one, is what Ms. Weston's saying, we don't have a clear second.
Well, I think we better find a clear second one, so.
So, how many?
Let's, let's go back and pick a clear second one. So, Mr. Carter, what's your second, what's your second goal there? Well, it was North Carver Water District.
North Carver Water District.
Like, what's, what's left? Go, let's go by what's left, what's left is finance and budget.
Or land development.
And landed development.
We just got to pick which one of those.
So, Mr. Carter, is it finance and budget or land development?
Well, finance and budget, no surprise.
Mr. Ryan?
Finance and budget.
Finance and budget for me as well.
Okay, so that should settle it.
That's three, that's the majority.
I think, oh.
So, number one is North Carver Water District, number two is finance and budget, number three is feasibility.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on to the town administrator goals.
What was number three? Sorry, I didn't.
It was feasibility of town properties, correct? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Number three is the town administrator goals, and again, we sort of lumped these into some different, different categories, and I guess the question I have before we vote on these is just, because I do want to make sure the town administrator is clear what we want. So, on the budget, finance item, Mr. Cannon, where those five things are together, do you feel comfortable, we are to vote those as a priority, that the five, those five things are one?
One category.
One item?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I'm just looking over them now, many of them do seem to be related, particularly on a timeline to the, to the budget. I would say VEDAR is, is separate out from that, but we are certainly moving forward with the VEDAR discussion, we've hired a consultant now to help us with that. I do know, and Mr. Hoffman asked the question, I do know we are in with VEDAR for this fiscal year, so nothing changed would happen until the end of the fiscal year, so, you know, just to be sure the board is aware of that, that kind of deadline. And then the monthly, quarterly, and annual basis, that's something that we continue to work on, so.
That's a clear goal, though.
Yeah, and, and I think with VEDAR, I think we all understand that while, at the end of the, this current term, we may not have a new system, we certainly could be well on the way to a new system, and there's a process that has to be followed to get there.
Yeah.
So.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I really don't have a timeline, but you know, if you think about it, you know, one thing about, you know, the consultant talks about transition plans. So, we could very well have chosen something by the election, and, right, I mean, it's April, right, and then you have, you know, May, only May and June, really, for the transition. So, I could be wrong about that. I could, we might want May and June for the transition to the new software system.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, I guess I'll certainly start us off, and I, I think, so, obviously, the North Carver Water District is important to me, and I had that ranked number one on the select board goals, I don't see, although I think, in all honesty, there's only so much the town administrator can do as far as the North Carver Water District, there really is, until our, the legislative act gets passed, what he can do is sort of, not, there isn't that much.
Well, the transition plan, I think, is huge.
And I think that, that is, that is important, but I just want everyone to understand that he's sort of at the mercy of the legislature here as to what he can do. But I'll rank North Carver Water District number one, if I was voting the last time, I would have had budget, finance, number two, but I've since come to reconsider, and under the communications section, that good select board, decision-making through proper and accurate information, I think, is, is going to be really important as we move through the year, so I'm going to rank that number two, and the budget, finance, item number three.
Okay.
And why don't we go the opposite direction this time, and start with you, Mr. Hoffman?
North Carver Water District, number one, and. Communication, number two, and then the budget, number three.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jones?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cannon, the last item on this list is the create health plan transition, health plan transition plan by December 2025, that has to be done regardless, right, of what we vote.
Correct, at this point, it is going to happen, the, to the best of my knowledge, the Gateway Group is actually going to dissolve June 30th, 2026. So, we have to go somewhere.
Okay.
We haven't chosen where we're going to go, but we will be going somewhere. And then, you know, we work on that plan continuously.
Okay, yeah, so, just so you're all aware of that.
Yes.
Again, I, I know you guys are all worked up about budget, finance, but I mean, this, this, this is what we do, the budget process, we have a timeline, we develop the timetable.
But that doesn't mean we always stick to the timetable, and I think that's important.
That's not the goal here, the goal here is to develop the timetable, that we always do that, and the date for articles, and the proofreading of articles, and all that stuff, define the financial reporting schedule, I mean, all this stuff is what we do. It's what the town, various town departments who work on this do. We're just telling them to do what they do. That's the way I see it, I, I, I find it a little bit offensive, because it is what people, you know, it's what the town administrator does, the finance director, treasurer, accounting, and all their support staff. So, I, I would, I know this is not something top of your mind, but I would support the, in supporting and endorsing an updated housing production plan, master plan, and open space and recreation plan, so that we can actually figure out our land uses in town, property uses in town, and so we can be, actually get some state money to do something.
So, that would be number one?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I think money's always a priority, and we get money, that's a good thing. North Carver Water District, I would put second, and communication, third.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, the North Carver Water District, we all know that has to happen, so I'm going to make that one, and we need that transition plan, as we said, so I think that's the biggest priority of that, is getting everything sorted out, assuming once it passes, you know, we're just going, you know, smoothly, we're not going to have to start planning after that fact, so that's number one. So, that's number one. I'll leave the Communications as number two, because I do think that having, you know, the accurate information and being able to vote on that is still very important. I did also have the same concern about the town health insurance, because that has to happen. I mean, that's a must. But I guess we'll just assume that, we'll leave it off the list, but it's gonna, it's gonna happen. And then, as far as the budget goes, I mean, so, we need, it's an important thing to the town. I think it's one of the top things to the town, is we stay focused on it. And I do recall last budget process season, we were modifying articles up to the last second, you know, before, and so it wasn't as smooth as it could be. So, even though we're saying it's, we have to do it every year, it just wasn't a smooth process. There were lots of complications, and so the hope is that we continue to get smooth at that, and it gets better every year, so we can put it aside and then focus on master plan and other things. But if we, you know, we really need to make sure that our budgetary process and finances are in good shape.
And, Mr. Carter?
Trick or scratch, just started moving stuff around. I guess, yeah, I think that I still have budget, finance, number one. And one of the items, I get, everybody says that it's supposed to happen, but it generally does not happen on time, or always running around at the last minute. What makes it unique is this whole new accounting system. We've been suffering for five years now with not being able to get critical financial data out to do any of these other wonderful things that we want to do. So, that's why I think it makes it, for me, an important priority. I've got North Carver Water District, this number two, and Communications, number three.
Mr. Chair, may I just add something? So, the budget planning and deadlines and so on, I know you all are frustrated. To the best of my memory, for as long as I've been doing this, it always comes down to the two weeks. Stuff happens, and we can't force it to be something that it isn't. So, I mean, you can ask for things to be, to happen, you know, in December or something, but come town meeting, we'll be making last-minute changes. And that's not to blame the current town administrator or the support staff, that's just the way it is.
I agree with you, but I also think it's important that the board let, make the town administrator aware what an important priority they think, they think that the budget process is, and how important they think it is that we keep to the timeline that we've put forward. And in the past, the timeline has drifted. And it's important for us to make the proper decisions, we need time to be able to do that. And if we don't stick to the timeline, we don't have that time. So, could you, Ms. Weston, run us back? Yes, Mr. Hoffman.
On the budget, finance, I understand what Sarah's saying. The one thing that really got me was number four, present a budget process timeline as agreed to by both the TA and the finance director. Also submit agreed-upon check dates to make sure we are on schedule. I think the key part is those check dates. In the past, I think we've all felt there is a plan out there, and we really didn't know if it was too late that these things weren't being done, you know, back, you know, on those dates. But I think if it's in black and white, that one, we can see. And there's always extenuating circumstances where things happen, but at least we'll know if there's check dates set up. Okay, you know, October 31st, this should have been done. Okay, well, we couldn't do that because of X, Y, and Z. So, I think if it's in writing, that kind of helps.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, I think it is in writing. We have, I think we've all been given a copy of that already.
I think we have. It's important that we keep to it, that's all. Could you run these back to us, Ms. Weston?
Sure. Number one was North Carver Water District, number two, Communication, number three, Budget and Finance.
Thank you. Could you do me a favor? Tomorrow, could you send an email out to the board with just a... Thank you. Moving right along, you have to set the date and the time of special town meeting, and set a deadline for articles to be placed on the warrant. So, the proposed date for special town meeting is October 7th, and I guess I would suggest the time is 6:30. That seems to be the time we have used on a regular basis. Mr. Cannon, have you checked with the town moderator to make sure he's available on that date and time?
Yes. Town moderator, town council, schools available, yes.
Okay. So, my recommendation would be, we set a date for town meeting of October 7th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, maybe I missed some things. The special town meeting, is there, how many articles do we think we're trying to get in for the special town meeting? Do we have a number?
Well, no, we don't have a, we don't have a number yet. Certainly, certainly, the pilot agreement is one. Certainly, the MBTA Communities Act, if the, if the planning board has something, would be two.
In theory, it shouldn't be a drastic number.
Yeah, and then there would be...
Probably somewhere between five and 10. And we have unpaid bills.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some housekeeping articles that we would have, but I don't think there's a number yet. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye. And is the meeting placed to high school?
High school, yes. Middle high school auditorium. Thank you.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, it is unanimous. And the deadline to be articles placed on the warrant, the suggestion, set the date from the town administrator, was August 18th at 4:00 PM.
Wow, is that enough time for...
Yeah, we're just finding this out now, I think. Does that give department heads time to do stuff?
It does. They've been on notice for a few weeks now. Yeah, we actually changed the meeting, if you will, remember, we were at September 15th at one point, backed it out, discussions with Cranberry Point for the pilot program, backed it out to October 7th. So, we, I've been in discussion with department heads.
Okay.
What is the status of the MBTA article being ready by then?
The planning board is actually having a meeting tonight to work on the MBTA article. So, they are currently working on it.
Okay, and how about the pilot agreement?
We are currently working on it and on schedule. They did have an onsite meeting, July 30th. I did check with Joe Roach, who is now our consultant, and the existing assessor, and again, on schedule right now.
So, you and everyone involved feels comfortable with that August 18th date?
Yes, yes.
All right.
All right, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Anything? All right, Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. Town administrator update?
Sure, I'll go fairly quick, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Actually, I was on vacation one of these weeks, so I don't have as much on my plate as normal. One thing, though, the chairman and I, we did attend a PFAS meeting last night in Middleborough, a very educational meeting, talking about how the town does handle their existing PFAS problem right now. There is one well with significant PFAS hits. They very much limit that well. They are not able to take it completely offline, primarily because of fire suppression on the critically hot days. And I don't have the dates remembered. I know we went to the heat wave, I can't remember if it was actually even late June. We almost hit a 100-degree day. But during those times of critical water use, I guess he does need to pump from this well occasionally. It goes into a water tower, it's mixed in with water that doesn't have, you know, and again, 99% of the water has very low PFAS, as one pump does have, hits above the criteria, but it gets blended together, is what they say. And again, it's fairly for fire suppression, so that they're ready for that, or they would take the well completely offline if you didn't need it for these one, these instances. But very, again, very educational, if you get a chance to watch it on their YouTube channel, it'd be worthwhile. I do have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, if you're interested, I could always...
And it was, if I could just add to that, I think I should point out that the town administrator took time to attend this on his vacation. So, that, Mr. Cannon, appreciate that.
No problem. You know, it is a big issue. It's a big issue in town, you know, right now, we're trying to get the North Carver Water District back up and running. But right now, we are reliant on the town of Middleborough. We heard from our home residents about the concern of PFAS, and they are addressing it. You know, they're also spending, I believe it's somewhere around $80 million to address it town-wide. They want to get to, what's the term they use, Mr. Chairman, zero detect. They actually want to get right down to zero detect, never mind just the state standards. They want to be well below that, so...
We should check with the town of Middleborough and see if they have a link to that presentation. They may have one, and we could put it up on our website. Thank you.
The next thing I do want to update the board on, I've had a chance to talk to other town administrators about the MBTA zoning, and kind of where the state of the smaller towns are right now, if you will. We are aware of the lawsuit that came down, of the determination of the lawsuit in favor of the MBTA zoning, really kind of set the towns back. My take on this, and this is from the South Shore communities, really, you know, nobody north of Boston or west, really, that they are resigned to the fact that the MBTA zoning does need to move forward. I, you know, they pretty much all dropped their lawsuits right now, and they see that it is the law of the land, and they do need to comply, is what it comes down to. So, I just want to make the board aware of that. If you want. The last thing I did, I did get a chance to attend an OPEB discussion over at the Plymouth County Treasurer. Tom O'Brien did a great job, just to let the board know, you know, we seem to be in very good shape with our OPEB funding on, you know, course to be able to supply that benefit to our employees for the rest of their lives. And, you know, again, we're well on the way. I do know it's always a concern, because, you know, we do carry a deficit with it, but we feel that, you know, the investments are very strong right now, and we are on a good timeline for it. So, it's an extended timeline, but that is the timeline. And with that, Mr. Chair, that's all I have to...
All right, thank you, Mr. Cannon. Again, thank you for attending last night while you were on vacation. Okay, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair for 48 hours in advance of the meeting, there are none. We have a request to use town-owned property, Shertliff Park, on August 7th. August 7th, from, not a lot of notice here, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM from Cumberland Farms. Is there a motion on this?
I'm sorry, what is that for? I didn't get a chance to see that.
I believe it's for...
Retirement party?
Yeah, or some employees.
Yeah, maybe the retirement party.
90 to 110 people.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. We are a request to use town-owned property, the gazebo and Shertliff Park, on September 25th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM from Carver Cares.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. And finally, we have a request for a one-day special license from the Carver Sportsman's Club on August 24th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Thank you. We have the approval of the minutes from July 1st, 2025.
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Thank you. We have the minutes of July 7th, 2025.
Not for release?
Nope, these are open session, July 7th.
Make the motion?
Second.
All right, we have motion and a second discussion. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
I wasn't at this meeting.
Oh, okay, so you're abstaining?
Abstained, yes, sir.
All right. And we have the approval of the executive session minutes from July 24th, July 1st, 2025, not for release.
Motion approved?
Not for release.
All right, not for release.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, thank you. And finally, we have the approval of the revised executive session minutes of April 15th, February 15th, 2025, for release subject to redaction.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you. Next on our agenda is a well update of the town well from Dave Seidenthoff, the Operations and Maintenance Director. Mr. Seidenthoff, thanks for coming in tonight. I think, as you all know, there's been, bless you, there's been a few failures in the town well, and I just thought it would be good to hear from Mr. Seidenthoff and what exactly happened.
Thank you.
And why it happened. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. I believe you all have a copy of the email, so I won't read it verbatim unless you'd like me to. So, we did experience some pressure losses on the municipal well. The first one was on Thursday, July 17th, in the morning. I was not in work that week. Facilities manager, John Ball, responded at 8:20, discovered the issue. The issue was the well pump was locked out due to a safety sensor. He took the necessary steps to get the well pump operational again and stop filling the storage tank. The operator was notified, they came in, water was restored. Three hours later, at 11:20. Saturday night, on the 19th, another incident incurred at 8:06. Water was restored at 10:00 PM. And then on Monday, the 28th, at that point, it was, seemed to be the same issue. I notified the operator, they came in and changed out that sensor that was causing the issue. We have not had an incident since. Also, if you're not aware, I was notified by the previous operator on the first week of June that they were terminating their contract with us as of July 1st. I had to go through certain procurement procedures. They actually had to stay on through the month of July. As of last Friday, a new operator started August 1st. A new operator is now operating the municipal well here and both school public water supplies. So, I have been working with them. Believe me, we, nobody takes these water losses lightly. I understand the seriousness of them. Anytime a pressure loss occurs, DEP is notified, there's certain protocols we have to go through with them as well, which have been done. So, I have been working with the new operator, basically having conversations with them every day. They were out on Friday, their first day, they were out again today, and we're compiling lists of things that they see that need to be done. They're putting together, we're working together, putting together pricing and suggestions on basically how to resolve these issues, because we don't understand the importance of them, and making, putting in systems and protocols in place. So, try to, obviously, I cannot guarantee that they don't happen, but try to put in as many fail safes as we can. So, we are notified in advance, and they, we can be proactive before anything happens.
Mr. Seidenthoff, who is the new water operator?
The new water operator is MP Water Systems out of Fall River, Mass.
Thank you. And can you just tell us the three failures in the well? Were they all similar, or were they different?
They were. It was basically a safety sensor with a reading that was out of parameter. So, what that does, that shuts down the well, so it cannot operate until it's determined, was it a faulty sensor? Was there an over or under chemical dilution, and things of that nature? And ended up being, there was no over or under chemical introduction into the system, was a bad sensor, which is intermittently giving bad readings.
Has that sensor been replaced?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
So, as part of your plan, I guess, you're going to take a look at other possible sensors, maintenance, and things like that? So, this was a chlorine sensor or something?
Yes.
That failed three times in a, three times in a row, kind of?
And we're looking at unifying everything, too, which we do have some differences now. So, just across the board with pumps, with type of dialing automation systems we have. So, we're notified, and things of that nature. We're looking at standardizing the three PWSs, so, to make things simplified and upgrade where it's necessary.
Would there have been a way to catch this issue? I know a sensor is hard, it's like something going on in your car, like if some light comes on and you're...
There is, and, and currently what we have right now, we should, um, the notification system, the tricky part is you have three different softwares that need to communicate. Um, and what's supposed to, um, bring them all together and send out a, an alarm isn't happening. So that's what, that's our number one priority right now, to get that reestablished, so we receive notification and we can respond before anybody knows. Right now, when people are out of water, they know there's an issue. Um, so this will, we can be proactive, get it taken care of before anybody even knows there might have been an issue or might not have been an issue, um, but they have no interruption to water is the goal.
Will it send a message to your phone or something quickly?
Yes.
So you know right away that there's a problem brewing?
Correct.
All right.
Um, there'll be multiple, multiple people notified.
Okay.
Yes.
Last question, I guess, would, would any periodic maintenance, how often do you inspect, I mean inspections and maintenance?
So the, the new operator is out once a week and myself or my staff are, are in the wells on a daily basis, putting eyes on them.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Carter?
So, so just looking at these, these three, uh, instances, looks like the range of, of not having water has been anywhere from two hours to three hours?
Correct.
So I would consider that pretty quick, I guess. Nobody wants to be without water?
Nobody wants to be without water, no, and, and, and that is, I believe, may understand, it doesn't, three hours doesn't sound like a long time, but when you need water, that is a long time.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, so we're trying to be proactive, so there is zero, um, that's our goal.
And when you say you switched water operators, so no more small water systems?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
No, I just want to thank you for doing that during your vacation, appreciate it.
Mr. Hoffman, anything?
No, thanks for the update, Dave.
You're welcome.
If I could, Miss Hewin, I, I want to say something, Mr. Carter saying, I believe, uh, staff time, I'm very, um, very proud of staff reaction. Staff notifies me right away, the problem seems to get resolved quickly, but again, like Mr. Seidenthoff said, yeah, it, staffs responding in an appropriate manner, uh, but it's the alarm systems that really, you know, staff needs to be notified when the, when the, when the problem starts. And if we had those three hours, right, then we'd be able to resolve without people losing water and we'd be able to build back into the system. So it really is the alarm system that we need to be working on, even the response time seems to be fine. We're getting it back and running as fast as possible, and these aren't major delays, but still, i- if that alarm system had gone off in the beginning, you know, while we have a little bit of storage in there and a little bit of leeway, we'd be able to, you know, there'd be no interruption in water, that's what I'm getting at.
That, that's right, and I guess my only comment would be, first of all, I think the, the response time and, and getting water, from the time you lost water to the time you got water back was, was a very short time, and though we never want to lose water, I think your department deserves a lot of credit for getting it back so quickly. But going forward, if there's something you need from us, whether it's a town meeting article or, or a recommendation for, to the finance committee or for finance committee transfer or, or something else, please let us know, because I, I think our goal, as well as your goal, is, is no loss of water.
Correct.
And, and we need to do what we can to try to make sure that happens.
Thank you for that support.
Uh, I know this was short-term, so I appreciate you coming in tonight and give us an update.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anything else for Mr. Seidenthoff before we-
Thank you very much.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Hoffman, yes?
What, so the, the procedure when the wa- say that the water goes out in a, in a homeowner in ours, you know, one of the residents has an issue, who do they call?
So part of our protocol, um, if it's myself or one of my, um, staff members upon this, if a water loss occurs, we have a, a list, um, that we notify, that list includes, um, the board of select chair, Mr. Townsend, um, the town administrator, um, we notify the Plymouth Housing Authority Director, um, we notify the public buildings that are affected, um, police station because they're a twenty-four-seven building, um, if it's during the day, all department heads are notified.
If, if I could, Mr. So, Mr. Hoffman, it's my understanding that the town i- is aware of the, the problem first, before we run out of water. Uh, what it comes down to is that because the sensors aren't working properly, you know, we only have an hour's worth of storage versus having, if, if the sensor went off quickly enough, you know, we'd have, I don't know, five or six hours worth of storage. And again, our response time seems to be about this three hours, all the time we get back up and running, do the diagnostics and fix something. Um, so we do, when we generally do know about the, the problem first, we can notify people, I, I assume actually they probably start conserving water right away, knowing this is a difficult situation, uh, but they, they don't run out of water generally until we, we know about it first, and we are telling them. That's generally how it goes.
Yeah, and I think there's, you know, oftentimes there's a, you can only notify people so quickly, you know, they, he notifies us, but at the same time, people are out there using water and it's same thing over the residences, people are using water and it just, you do it as quick as you can.
Correct, and, and you know, you look at the time, there are families over there, people are trying to get ready, you know, children for school, people are getting ready for work, so you know, it's difficult, right, you know, when you're, uh, young children at one point, you know, when you're trying to get three kids on the school bus, you may not be picking up the telephone.
Yeah, and, and, um-
Well, I, I guess, I guess my question more is, when there's an issue, say a resident, who do they call to make the town aware of it if the alarm system isn't working? So I, because I, I, a couple of people I've talked with have, you know, what do we call the select board, do we call the town hall, you know, what do you do after hours, that type of thing?
Yeah.
Something for the public to know as well, because there's a lot of different stories going out there. So in a scenario where the, the water does go out-
Typically, what's happened, Jim, is they'll, they'll call police dispatch, and police dispatch notifies me.
Okay. And, and do people, say, for the residents behind town hall, do they know that, that if the, if they had an issue or someone will be calling the, the police dispatch?
That's what's re- been recommended, yes. I believe the executive director over there has recommended that to the residents.
Okay, okay. I'm just hearing different things from different people, and not everybody knows that, obviously people that aren't living there probably don't know the procedure, but I just want to make sure that the, the public knows there is a procedure in those families as well as the departments, and pe- people affected by these wells do know that there is a plan in place of the communication, how it should be done.
Yep, best to my knowledge. Mm-hmm. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Did you have something else?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, I will be there for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, uh, select board announcements. Uh, Mr. Hoffman?
Um, let's see, I just wanted to, uh, get, have the pleasure of attending Carver Old Home Day, so I want to thank everyone involved, Betsy and your crew did a great job as usual. Uh, whatever you paid extra for the weather, do it again next year, so that was great. So thanks for everyone's hard effort on that, it was a great day.
All right, thank you. It's yours?
Yes, thank you. I, I too wanted to thank Old Home Day Association for another great clambake and festivities. Um, I know they have a variety of committees on the Old Home Day that, they, and you correct me if I'm wrong, um, they have a rock committee, they have a seaweed committee, they have the servers, and there's a lot of work that goes into that big clambake and, um, and, and the fire department does the fire, it's quite a, quite an event, and thank you all for that. Um, I wanted to remind people that Carver Night Out is on, is this Thursday, August seventh, from five P M. to nine P M., I think that's correct. Where you can, it's a family-friendly event, you can bring the kids and they can hop on the public safety vehicles and watch somebody get dunked, as my understanding usually happens. Um, and there are hot dogs, so come meet your public safety departments. And last, I just also want to mention, please don't forget Shane Gibbs Thanks, it's a food pantry, open to anyone in need. It's in the Carver Square Boulevard, um, location.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carter?
First, I want to say, um, it's great to be back to the board after my, I don't know, hiatus of X number of weeks due to an injury, um, and, uh, also want to reiterate, select, select board member Hewins on the Carver Night Out this week, it's been a, it's always a great time, I've gone every, every year, but I don't think I'll make it this year, that's all I got.
All right, okay.
Also, I attended Old Home Day, I want to say it is quite a production, there's a lot of people involved, and it's, it's really interesting to just watch the whole process of, you know, everyone coming together and doing, you know, all the food preparation and, and the baking and the serving and all that, it's, it's a great event for the town. Uh, they have, uh, old photos, I found myself in an old, uh, I think it was a old photo in one of the books, you know, from years ago with Ann Miller, if any of you remember Ann, we were, we were doing library tours back then, when, at Old Home Day, when it first opened in ninety-seven, so there's pictures of us, you know, doing, you know, tours for that, so yeah, it's quite a production, thank everybody for all their hard work, it was a warm day and, you know, they worked hard, and then also Carver Night Out again, yeah, same, same comment, uh, this Thursday, please attend, it's going to be a, a great event, and then the farmer's market too, we have that event that's ongoing, uh, there's music in the park and there's always, uh, you know, fresh fruit, vegetables, all that, so that's a good thing to keep, uh, you know, that'll, that'll continue on for a little bit and be over before you know it.
All right, thank you. And, uh, in the interest of, of brevity, I will just add my thanks to everyone that, uh, worked so hard on Old Home Day, it was a tremendous day, and, uh, I look forward to Carver Night Out this Thursday, so if you're watching us live, uh, I hope to see you Thursday night. Uh, at this point, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, and then we'll be back with a joint meeting with the capital outlay committee. We'll be in recess. Uh, we are here in a joint meeting with the Carver Capital Outlay Committee. Uh, Ms. Selger, would you like to call your meeting to order?
Sure, I'd like to call to order, um, on August fifth, two thousand twenty-five, the Carver Capital Outlay Committee.
All right. Uh, we have a number of items before us, from, uh, older, some pretty old, some not-so-old, uh, town meeting, uh, articles that have capital balances, and, um, I thought we have a, we have a list of five in front of us, uh, police and fire radio infrastructure, a town-wide tech upgrades, a town-wide infrastructure and equipment, uh, uh, ceiling tiles, tiles for the middle high school, and town hall exterior siding and trim. These items have all been approved by town meeting to spend, so if somebody for some reason feels that we should not continue with that appro- that appropriation, I think the appropriate thing to do would make a motion not to continue to spend that item. Are you, uh, in agreement in that, Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I think we have a couple that we can dispense of relatively quickly, so let's first take the town hall exterior siding and trim, which is the last item on your, on your list, for one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Mr. Cannon, my understanding is that money's no longer needed.
Correct, this work is complete.
Is that, that's correct?
Yes.
So, uh, what would the appropriate, what would be the appropriate motion, would it be to return the money to free cash?
Correct. Close it out.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we take the, uh, the, uh, town building, um, article from, uh, four, twelve, twenty-two, town hall exterior siding and trim, one thousand two sixty-six, sixty-three balance, and return that to free cash.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second?
Got a question?
Yes.
Um, these, I, what we're saying, whatever we're voting on, right, does this thing go to an article at town meeting? For town meeting to vote on to rescind, or is it the board's authority to turn around and rescind these and send them-
I actually believe the finance director has the authority to close these out with direction from the board.
Okay, I'm just a little bit confused because capital, for the past two years has been given to the finance director, nothing's been closed out, so-
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
We, for the past two years, we've been given the list to the finance director, not the car, I think last year we went through it with the past, but the previous finance director before that has been given the list to close out, and they never have.
And I, I can't speak to that, Mr. Carter.
I think, I think what I'm saying is the assumption was they didn't have the authority, that it had to go to the board, and then some, we were talking about it before, and it was had to go from the board to the town meeting. So I wasn't sure, we know exactly what the process is right now.
Mr. Praval could tell us about-
Well, can you, I think, I think the thing is, if the, if the position of the town and obviously the board is that this money's no longer needed, let's get it done in the appropriate manner, whether, but we have a special town meeting coming up on October seventh, if we need an article, let's craft an article and get it on that agenda so we can turn the money to free cash and, and repurpose, repurpose the money. Okay, so you'll, you'll have time to work with Ms. Praval and, uh, and work that out. Any, any opinion on that, Ms. Praval?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, you do not need to go to town meeting and close capital articles, once the project has been approved by the department head, that has been closed, and I just closed it at the end of the year as part of the closing process for the budget, and then that money then goes into the free cash, into the undesignated fund balance for the town.
Okay, all right, that's fine, and again, we have a, a select board meeting, another select board meeting coming up, so if you need something from us, please let us know.
Through you, Chair, um, um, the only time you would need town meeting vote is if you're going to re, if you wanted to repurpose the funds that were, had already been appropriated, so you would be changing the function.
All right, that's fine. So let's go now to the-
We need to take a vote on it, we, you had a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, we, we do. Uh, motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Hoffman, you have anything?
No.
Okay, uh, all in favor, Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewin says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you. Let's go next to the, uh, the fire department article, the, uh, police and fire radio infrastructure, and thirteen thousand eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-one cents. Um, Keith Weston, would you like to speak to that? So this is a relatively recent town meeting article, this was, uh, uh, April of twenty-two, town meetings article for fiscal year twenty-three, so it's not as old as some of the others.
So through you, through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, yeah, so this article was usually created for, um, we were upgrading, it was a three, four-part plan to upgrade, um, our infrastructure for, actually it was the school, police, fire, EMS, and the D P. W. We'll obviously use the most of the, that balance, uh, right now, we're at the stage that we're trying to get approved for new frequencies, um, for police, EMS, and fire, due to some interference problems that we're having. Uh, we've been working with the F C. C. now for approach, it's almost been eighteen months to get that approved. Um, we have the frequency approved, however, they approved it at a low wattage, less than we wanted, so we're trying to get approved at a higher wattage. In all honesty, we would like to use this money, um, we have a quote for a piece of equipment that we could use that is related to this, definitely inside the scope. If we had known that it was, you know, there was kind of a deadline and stuff like that, we would have definitely used it a little sooner, um, so we would ask some leniency on just using that, and I can use it right away and, and expel it. When we found out that this was coming up, obviously we made the chance to leave alone and let the board decide that, um, there certainly isn't the hill that I want to expire on, um, so I'm not looking to do that, uh, but we do have a quote, we can utilize it, and, um, having an article from two thousand twenty-three, especially from radios, is not uncommon. Um, this stuff, we're always upgrading, we're always changing things, we're always improving, there's things that change, there's things that break, and especially when we're dealing with frequencies, um, it's a time, it takes time. So again, that's your call, um, this isn't the one I want to leave on, so we would like to use it, but that's your call.
Miss, Miss Selger, before we start, as a select board, would you like to discuss, I know you had some discussions previously on this?
Yeah, so I actually wanted to bring this up, that when we met a couple of weeks ago, this was actually not on our list of the projects the capital like committee had discussed.
Okay.
So we, this was not something we were bringing forward to-
So you have no issues with this item?
We have no issues with this item, this was not on our list last time.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I don't have any issues, but I have a general comment for all of these, is that I think when you go to town meeting for a capital, this was a six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar capital item that was, uh, that was voted on and approved, so it usually, I would think that, you know, the taxpayers would assume that, you know, we're approving it for a given fiscal year, to be spending that fiscal year, there is a difference between like revolving funds and, you know, and yearly maintenance funds, and I think that, you know, we probably need to look at doing that in the future, where if we have a capital, you know, we have to look at a timeline for that, that capital project, and maybe the taxpayer should understand what that timeline is at town meeting, because I think usually people are under the assumption, and then in some cases, money looks like it's been tied up for years, which doesn't seem that that's a good thing to do, because there's different kinds of funds that we establish, we have maintenance funds, revolving funds, and all kinds of different funds that Ms. Praval can probably speak to, and maybe we And maybe we need to just make sure we're putting him in the right bucket so that, you know, the taxpayers understand how that money is being used year over year. This happens to be money that is left over. And we're going to deal with a couple of those tonight. And I think people saw that, okay, it's there. Let's use it for the purpose. And it's all still within the purpose that I think the voters, this is the important part, is making sure that the purpose the voters had originally voted for, it stays within that purpose. So as long as we're continuing to use the money for the same purpose it was voted on, that's the first important thing. But I think in the future, probably we want to look at establishing maybe the right maintenance accounts and things like that to deal with things that break or, and stuff like that, and maybe turn the money back, you know, as expected to the taxpayers and then come back the next year and say, I need the money for this purpose. That's just my recommendation.
And just for just a couple of quick seconds, you're not wrong at all in thinking that, okay? From the other side of the line, you know, you kind of look things a little different sometimes. So I could certainly understand if I was on the select board, why do these stay and why do they leave? So you're asking the right question. I guess I would just challenge you that when these come due, ask the department heads, you know, what they're doing with them. Because there are different classifications of articles, okay? When we deal with radios and stuff like that, or, I mean, a fire truck right now is used just four years. A regular fire truck's three years. Things do take time. There are some things that we could, I could tell you, I can spend this in four months and it will be done in no problem. But there are a lot of articles, especially when it gets into technology, that does take time to develop, get, and build. Because a lot of these we build ourselves. So through that, if I was on the other side of the coin, I would just say, it's great. Well, every year they come up. And I think Mrs. Pervail is very good at that. I can't tell you how many emails that I have gotten from her saying, what's the status of this? What's the status of this? And we try to give a little blurb of what we're doing with it. But at some point, it does need to end. No question about it. It's just nice if we get a warning about that and say, hey, we're really trying to move this. Do you think you can get rid of the next six months? Rather than getting just stuck in the situation that we kind of feel like we were, like, well, we really didn't know that it was a hot button right now. So very fair, well taken. I understand what you're saying.
Yep. And I think I agree with you. I think that's a good point. And I think one of our goals here, and I've spoken to the town administrator about updating us on a regular basis about the status of some of these articles, is to not lose track of them. So we don't have articles from 2018 that have outstanding balances when that money could have been repurposed for who knows what benefit three or four years ago. Mr. Ryan?
And plus, the other side of it, I think, as Ms. Pervail said, that this is a capital project. So it gets approved as a capital project. There's probably usually an understanding of, you know, I'm sure when it was approved, there was a dollar amount that was established with that capital project and said, this will start and when this project will end, when this happens. And maybe we're not, we need to be a little bit better at saying that this is the end of the capital project, just so everybody's on the same page. Not that we want to support you. We want to give you what you need. But it may have been a different way. We may have said, well, let's have a maintenance account or a reserve fund or some other account here. But I think in terms of capital projects, the understanding is that you're putting, allocating this money for that project. That project should have a start and an end to it. And when it's done, it closes out and any residual funds should go back to free cash.
Mr. Carter?
Go after this one, but just in general, right? Capital projects, some completely different from others. You're right. The brush break, the fire trucks, pick a date. I don't know what the date would be for something like that, right? But when you, generally with a capital project, once it's in service, it's done. Okay? So whenever the date was that the fire, police and fire radio infrastructures were working correctly, you know, pick a date, maybe like three months after that, all the bills are in, it's done. If something happens a year after that where you don't get, it's a maintenance issue. You know, you need to fix something. Then that shifts to the operating budget. And that's just for all capital projects. Once the, the kind of dividing line is it's in service. Once it's in service, make sure and look at these articles and make sure you've got everything you need. And then anything else happens after that goes on the operating budget. Just for all these things.
All right. Anything for anybody else? Ms. Hume, Mr. Hoffman, anything? All right.
So do you need a motion to leave this open?
Nope. I think it's already been approved. I don't think we need to take any action.
So no action?
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Why don't we move next to the school line item? These are for some ceiling tiles for the middle high school from, from April of 2018's town meeting, the amount of $22,916.68. Mr. Seidenthal, thank you once again for coming in tonight.
Certainly. Good evening. So I can speak on this. So these were the item that was approved back in 2018, was to replace all the acoustical ceiling tiles in the middle high school. And that was done after the roof was replaced because we had a lot of staining throughout the building due to the condition of the previous roof. So not knowing the way things were done, definitely I understand moving forward, we're going to do them differently. We would purchase tiles. We have limited staff. They, I had one or two guys changing them out. So that's how the process has gone. The amount that's left, the $22,000, is what's left in there. Is the project completed? No, it's not. I've been asked about this quite a few in the last couple of months and it's been spend it down, don't spend it down, spend it down, don't spend it down. So I've just froze and didn't do anything. To shadow what the chief said, this isn't the hill I want to die on. If the money's needed, it's needed. If you tell me to spend it, if you want it spent down, I can buy them. I can house them somewhere. I didn't want to do that upfront because obviously it would have been a long time. It's the amount that's left would finish the project. But we are in a good position where not all of them had to be changed. So I could reuse some old ones that aren't stained. So that's where the project lies.
Do you think, Mr. Seidenthal, you would be in position to finish up this project in time that for April town meeting, if there was some money left over from this, we'd be able to bring that back to free cash?
I could do that, yes. Yeah.
All right. Why don't we turn it over to the Capitol Act Committee first?
Sure. I believe we would be okay with that also. We just have this on our list from one of our January meetings. We had discussed that it would be closed out by the end of the fiscal year. So that's why it's still on our list.
Okay.
But I think we would be okay if it was closed out before the next town meeting.
Before next town meeting. Okay.
How does everyone else?
Well, I just got to go back to this. Sorry. I'll go back to this for a second because this has come up many, many times. And I guess I just don't get from the standpoint of, again, the job's done. It's completed. It's in service. Anything else happens, these tiles goes in the operating budget if they get stained. I'm just not sure why, when the project was done, you just wouldn't purchase these things. And if you wanted to keep an inventory on a shelf someplace or in a storage area someplace. Because this, we've talked about this for only knows how long. And I'm not aware of anybody saying, don't spend it. I think everybody was saying, get it, spend it.
Right. And I'll go back to, we didn't buy them all at once because I don't, it was a large quantity of tiles. I don't have an area that's safe. I wasn't going to put new tiles. Most of the areas we have, the old DPW, the old fire station, we have roof leaks. I don't want to purchase new material to get it ruined. So that's why it was drug out.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, Mr. Seidenthal, didn't you say the project is not complete yet?
Correct.
Because it has to be done piecemeal because you only have two people?
Right. We have limited resources to-
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Now moving to if, let's just say this project came up today and the guidelines are, all right, you've got a year to do it, then we look at outsourcing it or different options, you know, moving forward.
Yeah. I guess the only suggestion I would have, and if you think you can get this project done in a time that, you know, we can address what's the balance is for April, I'm fine with that. I just think going forward, it might be a better practice, you know, if you know you had any, I don't know how many ceiling tiles, but you only have the ability of the personnel to replace so many in one year, maybe we're better off doing it over a two or three-year span and not taking quite as large of a chunk. That's all. Mr. Hoffman, do you have anything?
No. Also, thank you.
Anything else from Ms. Hume?
Yes. So just a little footnote, if Mr. Seidenthal were to do that, I guarantee everyone at town meeting would say, well, didn't we do that last year? Which is why you want to get it all done at once.
It just may be that, you know, again, we have this money hanging around and we have a lot of needs in town. So it might just be that we're better off doing it in smaller chunks and using what's left for something else. That's all. Just a thought. But if no one has anything else, I think we can let Mr. Seidenthal go. Everyone good?
Thank you.
Thanks once again for coming in today.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. And now we get to a couple of larger items. Yes.
I'm sorry. Before we go on to IT?
Yes.
There was just one additional project that was on our list that we thought we were going to discuss that's not here tonight.
Okay.
Which was the replace, it's from 2020, voted, I believe, it was voted in 2020. For 2021, it's to replace election tabulators for $24,000. I just don't want us to miss it because we did have that on the list for tonight.
Did we miss that on the list?
No, we did not. That money has actually been spent.
Okay.
So they had to-
Can someone explain why it wasn't spent when it was approved at town meeting?
I believe it was. It just was not reported correctly. That's all.
Ms. Pervail, can you speak to that?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the tablets, working with the town clerk, they were different during the different polling seasons. There were different tablets that they needed. And then they changed, I guess the state law changed for some of them. But she just acquired those tablets within, before the end of the fiscal year, FY '25. So those were purchased. That's why you didn't see them on the sheet. But it had to do with, I would have to ask her in more detail, but it had to do with just some changes within the tablets that they needed and then state requirements. And there was a delay in purchasing those. But they were purchased at the end of the fiscal year. And so that's why you don't see it on your report as available.
Okay. So when we met on July 16th, they were, it was still open. So was it spent before June 30th?
Yes. And so it was probably in between the times when the warrants were posted and when the budgets were, yes. So for, the way we do our warrants, the last, the first warrant in July is for the fiscal year FY '26. And then the second warrant is covering all the invoices for FY '25. So I think it was just a timing in terms of when you received the report and when the invoice was on the actual warrant to be paid. Because at the end of the fiscal year, you know, July 1st, we paid everything in FY '26. And then, because we can't pay two years at the same time. And so for that warrant, we paid FY '26 in the beginning in July. And the second one, we finished paying FY '25 invoices. So it was probably in transit between the time that you got your report.
Okay.
I think, can you, someone pass the microphone?
Microphone.
People can't hear you at home.
Yeah.
A few meetings back, Ms. Weston came and asked us for, I don't know, permission to use the $30,868 for HR training and startup. I don't see that on this list any longer either.
Yes. So that item was not available. That item was voted at town meeting to be used to cover FY '25 budgets.
Okay. Because that was from 2016.
Yes. And that money was in the warrant, FY '25 budget warrant in the article as a prior year balance that was going to be used to support FY '25 budgets. That's why it had to come off of the report because it's not available because it's being transferred to, for the prior fiscal year's budget as part of the warrant request. It was a funding source.
Getting back to the tabulators, could someone just tell me what year, what town meeting that came from?
2020, June 29, 2020, for fiscal, sorry, fiscal 21. So the question is, it's five years later and then at the end of June, it gets spent. I'd like something from the town clerk as to why it took five years.
If I could, there is a written explanation here. I apologize for her being here. She just says they held off to not purchase the first generation of tabulators as there was controversy after the 2020 presidential and the Dominican-
Dominion.
Dominion, sorry, being the manufacturer. There was a huge demand for extra tabulators for central tabulation and vote by mailing process. I've been just providing complimentary, extra equipment for our existing tabulators. So again, we would have to bring her in here.
So I guess going forward, the thing we need to do, and Mr. Cannon, I just, I hate to put too much on you, but I think this is on you and Ms. Pervail, is if we have town meeting articles like this that are not spent, for whatever reason they're not spent, and they may be very good reasons that they're not spent, someone needs to come back and update the board and say, hey, you know, we appropriated this money, town meeting appropriated this money, but we can't make the purchase at this time. And this is why. I think the town needs to know. They, certainly if they appropriate something at 2020 town meeting, most people would assume that by 2025, that money would have been used to buy whatever they thought they were buying.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'll commit to, again, a yearly review. I don't believe this has happened, obviously, for a number of years. So I would commit to a yearly review. Ms. Pervail and I can walk through these, you know, fairly simple.
Yeah.
To look at the years and, you know, to pick out the outliers, really, it comes down to. And even come back to the board and let you know.
I think so. And perhaps sometime in January might be a good time for this. That way, if there are things that the board feels, for whatever reason, the money wasn't spent, it needs to be repurposed, we can use it, move it to free cash and repurpose that money at town meeting.
You know, I can think of one, I've talked ahead, I think we all, about the ladder truck that we had to approve at town meeting for a four-year wait period. You know, so we're going to be sitting here saying, this is the ladder truck that we all talked about? The chief explained at town meeting that it'd be a four-year, you know? So some things you can check off and say, there's a reason why it is waiting. But the rest, I believe we can-
And sometimes things just happen. Sometimes there's, you know, we all saw what happened during COVID or there's a supply chain issue or whatever it is. There might be a very good reason why the purchase didn't get made, but we need to know why the purchase didn't get made. And, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter?
No, I was just going to read her. I'm just looking. And it's kind of like apples and oranges. There are some things like ladder trucks, we're never going to know when it's going to be spent. There's other things that take forever. I just look at us, town meeting graciously approved us to spend money to improve services for them. And when something just sits there for five, six, seven years, it just leads me to believe that there's something wrong.
And this was long. Someone should have brought this one back. Ms. Selger, do you or your board have anything to add to that item, add to the discussion on this item?
I don't, I don't believe we do. We just want to make sure, you know, we're either going to close it or was it going to be spent?
Do you have any other items on your list that for whatever reason didn't make it to tonight's?
No, that's the last one from our final. We've had many lists, just so you know. But this is our last one from our list two weeks ago.
All right. So, okay. So the last item, well, two items, but I think we should probably take them at the same time, is IT. So we have one, townwide tech upgrades for $119,509.83 from fiscal year 2018. And another for $49,508.19, townwide infrastructure and equipment. That was from fiscal year 2023. So Mr. Neely is here to speak to us about these. Mr. Neely, thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you. So currently, currently right now, the $119,286.57 from 2018. I was only made aware of that, those funds approximately a year ago. And they've only been available to me in my accounts to spend for about six months. So I have worked at getting some pricing and quoting for firewalls, servers for all town departments, primarily police and fire. And the firewalls primarily to take care of, in both aging firewalls at the, at both police and fire. Along with that, with the 2023 funds, also around the same timeframe, with those two funds to cover both redundant firewalls, three servers in a cluster. So it's not like they're individual servers. They all have to work together. A storage array for data to store on those, for the cluster to access the data. And what that, what that does is if a server dies, everything continues to run. And you replace, you replace the one server in the cluster and then you, you know, you continue on. So there's redundancy in that so that we don't end up with, you know, police or fire being down because they only have one server.
Now, there's a couple of things to this item that's a little bit different from the previous items. This meeting, this joint meeting was originally scheduled for August 19th. I moved it up to tonight because Mr. Neely reached out to me and told me that a number of the purchase orders that he had out there for various equipment, the prices were going to increase substantially if we didn't act sooner rather than later, which is why I moved the meeting up. I felt it was important that we make that decision. And I guess, I mean, obviously, this money's been out there for a long time. You know, 2018 is the oldest item on our, on our list. And Mr. Neely has certainly has not been here all that time. But we have a couple of decisions tonight. Obviously, at least from my own thoughts, this money should have been acted on. It's not appropriate that we appropriate money at town meeting in 2018 and we're sitting here in 2025, looking to spend the money. That's not, that's not appropriate. But it is, it's an obvious thing that we need IT. And we need to upgrade our IT. We have a number of things around town hall that we need to do. And if we don't spend this money on IT tonight or authorize Mr. Neely to spend this money, then we might very well be coming back to town meeting for an IT line item for substantially more money. And I think, Mr. Neely, you can probably tell us exactly what that money would be.
Approximately 20% increase. And we'd be looking at, and that's, you know, within the next couple of months. But if we have to, if I have to go back and request this capital, now we're looking at a year and a half from now. So, you know, at a minimum of 20% is $46,000.
So just before we begin our discussions, just speaking for myself, while I'm certainly unhappy that we would ever have money sitting around that was appropriated in 2018, $119,000. There's no, there's no excuse for that. That's not Mr. Neely's fault. It's not Mr. Cannon's fault because neither one of them were here. But the fact of the matter is that should never happen. And that money certainly could have been spent in different ways around the town to help us. But it's also a fact of the matter that if we don't allow Mr. Neely to spend this money, we might very well be looking at a town meeting article in April for substantially more money for the same thing that we could have gone forward with tonight. So just my thoughts on that. And I want, before we, as a select board begin discussions, I want to turn it over to you and your board, Ms. Selger.
Sorry. Sorry. So I just wanted to let everyone know, we're not against purchasing IT equipment. We've been talking about these two articles since January. So what we had originally proposed, what we wanted to have done, was the articles closed before town meeting. And then when IT was asked for, asked for the money, again, for exactly what it was going to be needed for. But I believe if we had done that, it would have went into free cash and would not have been available till next year. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's why we didn't do it. However, we're just not sure if what we're purchasing the IT equipment for today is what we asked the town to approve back in 2018. So typically, when the IT department, it wasn't you back then, they used to show us a little slideshow or bring a deck of PowerPoint and tell us exactly what this was all going to be for. And the only thing we see on the warrant, though, is townwide technology for recycling equipment, purchase and installation, and the school E-rate. So I'm not sure if that's the firewall or not the firewall. And that's why we didn't vote on this, we wanted to bring it up to the select board on the IT, because we did find out a couple of weeks ago that there were POs now out there, and we're moving forward. So we don't want to stop it, but we're just not sure if this is what we thought we were purchasing back in 2018.
No, and that's an excellent point, and as soon as you brought that to my attention, the first thing I did was go to Mr. Cannon and Ms. Weston and say, find the town meeting article, and let's make sure anything we're thinking about doing today with that money is in the scope of the article from then. That article was pretty vague. So I think almost anything you do is in the scope of the article, whether it's, whether it's what we want to do or not is a different thing, but the article was, was pretty vague.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I want you to know that neither myself or the finance director will allow any department head to misappropriate any funds from town meeting. It is a very broad article. We do feel that it does fit in within the appropriation, you know, given by time. I won't speak to the timeframe. Again, I've already committed to a review year after year. 2018, you know, was seven years, you know, geez.
And believe, I mean, I'm not saying you would, I'm just saying that I think the first thing we had to do as a group was to identify the article.
Yeah, I want people to rest assured that we'd never misappropriate funding.
Okay. Mr. Chu.
So if I may, too, that was three town administrators ago.
Yes.
So it was quite a while. And Mr. Neely, when did you join the town?
At the end of '23. So in September, I will have been here for exactly two years.
Okay. So my take on this is pretty much yours, Mr. Townsend, and, and Mr. Neely's. I mean, we, this money's already been appropriated. It's, the way it was explained, it sounds to me like all these safety departments really depend on being connected, and right now, they're not connected in a redundant fashion, or when, when one thing goes down, everything goes down, instead of having this data center, the storage array to, that keeps things going.
You are, you are correct. So if the, if the fire department was to lose their server tomorrow, they'd be down and out. If the, so the police department has, has, has an issue with one of their, one of their servers now, when it goes out, they have to shut everything down in order to, in order to reboot, to bring it back up in most instances. There are a couple of occasions where they, where it can get, it can come back up without having to reboot everything, but it is problematic, and this is to help address some of that, those issues.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the current firewalls we have are ancient? Is that?
Ancient's not the right word, but they're, they're definitely end of life.
End of life. That's even worse than ancient, in my opinion. So, so basically, these are things that we, we really need, and we need them even more specifically for our public safety departments.
Yeah, it is all related around cybersecurity. You know, currently, right now, we have a, you know, a footprint that, you know, looks like this. If we don't do this, our footprint's going to be, you know, as big as this table, and the longer we wait, the bigger our footprint gets, and the more we become vulnerable.
Okay.
You know, the idea is to keep everything, you know, it's not, as far as cybersecurity goes, it's not a matter of, you know, if, it's a matter of when.
When.
And when it happens, we want to make sure that we minimize what happens, you know, when that happens.
So, so I just want to thank you for actually bringing this to our attention, because it was something I didn't realize. As Mr. Townsend said, it was a very vague article, and I thought, yep, this is one of our goals, we have to update our IT. And we finally have, we really didn't have an IT director, in my opinion, before you that was really on top of these things. So I really appreciate your bringing it to us.
Mr. Hoffman, do you have any comments here?
No, the town administrator, the finance director, I feel this is appropriate, I don't know what was voted on, and I'm comfortable with that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ryan.
So my same comment is, yeah, we can't let this happen in the future. In fact, part of our discussion really should be happening at town meeting. I mean, it's really town meeting that should be looking at the needs of the town and deciding. We're making a decision that, you know, the infrastructure needs to be done, and is important. But again, it's something we probably should have brought to, to town meeting, so that that could have had that discussion. With that said, I have a couple of questions, because your plan really involves, you know, you had a plan, and I guess one question is, are we on plan for what you had put together? And the other part of that is that, there's a, there's a couple parts of the plan. One is laptops and additional monitors for people, which I don't consider a security in the, you know, well, in some cases, the laptops are systems that are important. But then there's also the firewalls and the servers and things like that. So I noticed on the plan, you were doing laptops, and then you were doing security and firewall, and then backup and disaster recovery was coming much later in the year. It seems to me that first thing you should be looking at is making sure the servers stay up, the firewalls are up to date, and all that's done first on the plan before we start refreshing laptops and systems and giving people monitors.
You're looking at my timeline?
Yes, I'm just asking where you are on that.
My timeline, so the laptops and monitors were for the town hall, which has been completed.
Okay.
And then the, at the end of that timeline is to replace the laptops and desktops over at the police station, because they are also at end of life. And in the middle of that is the firewalls and servers for police and fire.
So have those been ordered already? Have you already?
I have POs on them, and I am waiting currently, right now, I have reached out to, to the vendor to get a new quote, because I had to get it quoted. They're telling me that they believe they can hold the pricing until the 18th of the month, but originally, it was the 8th, and I got a message from them today that says they're going to honor some of it until the 18th, but not all of it, and they got to re-quote. So I'm waiting for new quotes. Hopefully, I get that by next week. And if you, you know, if we allow this to go through, I'll have this money spent within the next couple of weeks.
And that was my other question, was is, are you going to be able to get, execute the plan and spend all the money this year, so that we can, at the end of the year, say it's all been done?
Yes, currently, right now, based on my timeline, it would be, most of this would be done by December, but, you know, with this small delay that I have in here, so I'm probably a month and a half behind schedule. But yes, and this also includes bringing in outside help to configure the servers, configure the firewalls, to get them up and, you know, up and running faster.
And that's within the cost of?
That's within the cost, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And again, yes.
I was going to say, John was ready to move forward with this, so we put it on hold, or we say, a month and a half ago, just because there was, you know, I went to the Capitol Committee meeting, a couple of them, I knew she was going to come in front of the board, so just asked John to, to put it on hold until we had a determination.
I'm aware of that, and I appreciate Mr. Neely reaching out to me, because if he hadn't reached out about the urgency of some of these things, we wouldn't be talking about this right now. We'd be doing it in two weeks. And I guess my only comment as regards to what Mr. Ryan said, if you do go through this, and there's some amount of money, a small amount of money left, then we can sweep that, and come April, we'll put that back into, into free cash. Mr. Carter, is there anything you'd like to add here?
All right. 2018 townwide tech upgrades has nothing to do with what we're doing right now. In 2018, there was, there's this vague item to go out and spend $190,000 worth of computers. In 2020, we had the money that came in from the federal grants, that I've seen all kinds of things purchased. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in IT work that was purchased back in 2020. I'm not sure if we're saying that that's out of date or not. I'm looking at this.
So just as far as some of the ARPA funds that were spent, if that's what you're referring to, most of that money went to the EOC.
Yep.
Downstairs. We spent, that hadn't been updated in a long time, and we hadn't had the money to do it, and we saw that as a rare opportunity to, to bring that up to standards, and that's where a lot of that money went. I don't know if it all went there.
It's not on all this list of spending that's been done. So I think we've been spending a lot.
Mr. Carter, I just want to point out, too, that we didn't really have an IT director.
I understand.
So I don't know who, it may have been the town administrator we had three, three town administrators ago, who just put this article in, and so I just don't, I want to make it clear that now we actually have someone who's going to implement this, the way it should be done now.
And, and I don't like the idea of, hey, you got a gun to your head, you got to make a decision tonight, or you're going to lose money because costs are going up. Costs go up all the time. Bad planning is not something that you're going to save money from, not your bad planning, it's the, what we've been doing now since 2018, apparently.
Right, and it should have, and I'll agree with you, this, you know, this stuff would have, should have been done in 2018, but we would, you know, we wouldn't be quite in the same situation, but we would still be in the same situation, because IT equipment really needs to be recycled every five years.
Which brings me to another one of my points. I'm looking at, and if I'm wrong in these numbers, feel free to throw this out.
Yeah.
I think somewhere I saw $297,000 was some kind of number that you had targeted to get everything that you wanted, your wish list done, in one of these consulting agreements?
Yes, at one point, but we're down total of everything right now is $264,788.69.
So $260,000 to get all this work done. Right now, if I look at some of the articles from '22, '23, '24, and '25, I don't sure, and I'm not sure if you're trying to use, repurpose any of your '25 and '26 money, but roughly up until fiscal '25, there's $216,000 of unspent funds.
Right. This, that number that I, that I just gave you includes all of my capital money as a total.
Okay, so you'd be using, that 216 would be going towards that $260,000 number.
Yes.
So now, when you say that it gets, I agree, but I'm not sure why would be buying, and again, I don't, I don't claim to be IT, but I'm looking at, you know, 35, I'm not sure if they're laptops or towers or things like this in this, in this PO. And my question is, in private industry, we always try to stagger these things, so that you don't have to worry about in five years now, having to go out, five years, they die in five years.
Correct.
I got another 35, 40 I got to buy. So my, my thought process there is that this should go to town meeting in October, on October, with a complete plan in phases on what you need to get done in order to get us up to speed. You know, I would assume that your firewalls and your, and your servers and your networks need to happen first, because what, who cares if you got a laptop if it doesn't work, if it's because of the server and the firewalls and the data's not safe.
Right.
And then you do a tranche of computers, and then you stagger it. Because I don't see two, I don't remember seeing $297,000 on any capital outlay five year forecast for IT. So it sounds like this.
There is currently, right now, so in the next couple of years, we're going to have to replace all of our network switches.
Above and beyond this?
Beyond the, yeah, beyond this. And unfortunately, it's not, I want to stagger everything, but right now, we're not in a position to stagger. If we were in a position to stagger, I would, I would break it up and stagger it as, you know, as best I can. The only thing I can do going forward is start to stagger it now, after we get everything updated. So I just replaced lap, you know, computers here in the town hall. In a couple of years, I'm going to start replacing them again, but stagger them so that they're not all due at the same time. And then, you know, process that, that through. It's going to take a little bit of, you know, a little bit of work, a little bit of, you know, configuration to, you know, figure out where the proper number of laptop, desktop replacements are going to be per year. But yes, I do agree, it needs to be staggered, so that we're not looking at, you know, large replacements all at once.
I just think that this needs to go to town meeting to basically let taxpayers know that we're going to reallocate this, these, these funds to a plan that's today's plan, not the 18 plan, not the 17 plan. I'm pretty sure people will get a buy-in that it needs to get done, but I just think that it's a disservice not to go to town meeting and let taxpayers know this is what we're doing with your money. So I don't want to see this go back to free cash. I'm not sure what motion, I'll make it if someone can give me the wording for it, and I would like to make a motion to have the IT director go to town meeting with a plan for using some of these, these funds and get approved at town meeting.
But if I may, Mr. Chair, through you, so we'll be paying, didn't you say 20, between 20 and 30% more?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what you want to do?
It's not what I want to do, but that's the position we're in.
No, we could just authorize him to spend this money now.
Even though taxpayers didn't approve it.
Yes, they did.
They didn't approve this plan.
Well, they did.
25% they didn't approve.
The money has been allocated.
Doesn't matter to me, they didn't approve it, they didn't approve this plan.
Well, what, what did they approve? Equipment?
Apparently, a big number that nobody could decide back in 2018, that it was worth spending money on.
No, no, I understand, but I mean, you read the article, doesn't it say equipment?
Says townwide equipment, doesn't say what time.
Well, that's what this is. I don't understand.
So you're telling me in 2018, we voted on something that was to spend in 2026?
Presumably.
I would, I would.
It probably wasn't explained to us very well at the time.
So they were, so we're clear, there were two articles. One was for $190,000, and that was townwide technology upgrades and recycling of equipment, purchase and install. And that also has something called school E-rate, which I, I don't know. I know, Mr. Cannon, I had asked you to reach out.
I was not able to determine that was.
Okay, well, that was a $190,000 article, and I, I don't know, but if I had to guess, I bet the school E-rate cost, I bet the balance is the town side, and the school used theirs to buy school E-rate, whatever. I don't know, I don't know, Ms. Lake, if you have any idea about what school E-rate is, but I, I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
School E-rate is a special pricing level that schools receive when they buy equipment, and it's, you know, equipment and services.
Oh, okay.
Is an E-rate, an educational rate, that's what E-rate stands for. An educational rate that they receive, they get a deeper discount than we do.
Okay, so part of this money probably went to school.
Yes.
Infrastructure. Then there was another item back in FY 2023, for townwide technology, infrastructure, and equipment. That's it. Townwide infrastructure, so both very vague articles. So I don't, I don't think, none of these things are outside the scope of the article, I don't know. Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, I think, you know, your infrastructure is, in some respect, even back then, you have servers, you have laptops, you have monitors, you have firewalls, all that technology existed back then. I think the intent was that that all needed to be refreshed. I think what happened is it didn't happen.
Yeah.
You know, so we, as a town, said, yeah, we need to keep up on our infrastructure. And like you said, it should be an ongoing thing, year over year, we're refreshing it. I think the intent was to do that, and it wasn't executed well. I agree, you know, it's important to keep town meeting involved here, but I still think the funds are the nature of it, was that, we know what it is, servers, firewalls, and systems that all need to keep current, because, you know, things change, you know, and they, they get out of date, and they got to be updated. So I think, and then the other article, that was the, the original one, then the other article said the same thing, townwide technology, infrastructure, and equipment for $56,000. So, you know, that is what we're doing here. I mean, it is all of our infrastructure that we want to keep up to date. So while, even if we were to go to town meeting, I guess my question is, you'd be transferring the money for the same purpose. You'd be saying, okay, we have this purpose of spending money to upgrade, which didn't happen, but still needs to happen, and does town meeting approve doing, continuing to do that? I don't think it's a stretch to say that the funds are there, and we need to keep the infrastructure up to date, and we could probably continue to use it for that and go forward.
And I think the thing, the important thing is here, we're talking about approximately $170,000. If we have, put the two together, if we have to go to town meeting and increase this by 20, 25%, we're costing the town a lot of money, I think, just to delay a few months. And I'm sorry, I think someone over here had.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Just with, just if you could use the microphone.
I know every year, the IT department requests money for technology upgrades, so on and so forth, but if we knew we were going to need almost, what, $260,000, why did that, why was that not requested at the time when we were looking at capital needs and demands? Instead of now, we're looking at what we have and how we can spend it.
I can't, Mr. Neely, maybe you could speak to that.
It's not, it's not necessarily looking at what we have now and how to spend it, it's looking at the equipment and how aged it is and how it wasn't updated in the past. So for instance, when I stepped in, when I stepped foot here in the town hall, and I looked at all the desktops in the town hall, they were approximately eight to nine years old. That's unacceptable in the IT world. It needed, that stuff needed to be updated.
Right, right. So my point was, like, when you submitted your request in November, or whenever that was, how come that wasn't part of the request?
At, at that point, I was, we're still running, some of this stuff still runs on, you know, in the schools' infrastructure, and it has to come off the schools' infrastructure. Um, because there, not only is the schools updating things, they're moving things away and, and changing servers out and canceling out servers. So, some of our servers for the town hall that, you know, that I have moved a lot of the data off of are still running over there, and I need to provide another server here, plus the, you know, the police station and the fire station, which also need to be updated.
Okay, thank you.
As their, as their server operating systems are also end of life.
I just want to mention to you, I'm looking at these two articles right here. But IT comes forward every year and asks for, um, capital funds. And I believe the last two years, when you've come forward, we have been approving, I know one year, we had to scroll back a little bit on the amount, but we have been, um, I'm sorry, we have been allowing, um, some of the projects for laptops, desktops, I think we said two monitors per desk. So, those should already be in some of the funds you have for '25 and '26, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I said that everything, everything that I mentioned here, that number that I mentioned, includes the capital money from '25 and '26. So, that is, that is full inclusion. So, at the end of, at the end of FY '26, there will be, you know, well, there'll be some leftover, but, you know, there will be, uh, you know, everything will be cleared up and done.
Okay, so those should be okay to keep purchasing, I would think, with the POs? It's just anything outside of those approvals? And is that the stuff that you're saying is going to have some type of an increase if we don't purchase it now?
Yes, so the servers, the firewalls, um, minus the firewalls because of the way that, um, I submitted, when I submitted the PO, my vendor shipped me the firewalls. So, the firewalls, I actually have an invoice for the firewalls, and the firewalls are sitting on the floor in my office currently. Um, but as far as the servers and, and all of that stuff, Dell is telling me that there is going to be a price increase. And right now, I'm working with Dell to try to hold the price so that we don't have to encumber that increase.
Okay, I think we've gone around this enough, we've heard everybody's opinions. Is there a motion to be made here?
I think I made one, but no one's second.
I'm not sure I heard an actual motion. Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Carter?
I would like to make, make a motion for an article to go to town meeting with a revised IT plan, current IT plan, based on repurposing these fronts from these old articles.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? All right, hearing that, I don't know, your motion.
I'm not surprised.
All right. So, there's no action we have to take?
There's no action we have to take here.
To continue forward.
Uh, Mr. Neely, thank you for coming in. I, I just want to point out to everybody, before we go home, that there are some other items that we're going to have to deal with at our next meeting, the free cash open articles. Uh, Mr. Cannon, well, he's looking into making sure we have the most accurate information. He'll have more information coming shortly on that.
Mr. Chair, before you continue, so, so Mr. Neely is authorized to spend these funds?
Mr. Neely is authorized to spend those funds. Mr. Neely and everyone, we appreciate you coming in tonight. And I, I just think going forward, it's a, it's a feeling of the board that on a periodic basis, we should, we should check on these open articles and see exactly where we're at, what the funds are, and if there's anything that's available to be swept back into a free cash for, to be reused. That's all, Mr. Carter.
And I'd like to add, going forward with our budgetary process, it would be good for you with the capital projects, at least give us a timeline, you know, so that we have expectations, and especially at town meeting, because I think, again, a lot of people's expectations when we vote on capital purchases, they're going to happen that year. Um, but if it's going to continue, it would be nice to let us all know in town meeting to say, I'm going to, I'm asking for authorization for a capital project, and the expectation is this is going to be one year, two years, three years, or that'd be good to, to know ahead of time.
Ms. Selger, would you like to adjourn your board?
Yes. Who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, um, the select board capital outlay. Yes?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, to adjourn capital outlay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
There are a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, Mr. Carter?
Uh, John Carter says yes.
Dan Ryan says aye. Mark Townsend says aye.[1775.33]